Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 19th, and the time is 1:00 PM. Has the front lobby been cleared?
Yes.
Thank you. We are here today for our school board briefing meeting today. Welcome. Does the superintendent have any changes to the agenda or anything else, questions?
No changes to the agenda, other than the recommendation that we switch the order slightly today so that we could leave the policies towards the end of the meeting. Therefore, academic initiatives would be first up, followed by the other item coming from academic services, and then finally, your policies.
So, in regards to superintendent, member Juvenelli indicated she had a meeting before this and be unavailable. I was going to ask the board if they would be all right with us moving item B1, policy review, because I believe we'll have some significant discussion to the end and have B2 go first. We good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up, for a total of 10 minutes. Right now, let's proceed to item B2.
Mr. Vice Chair, with your permission, I'd like to introduce two really amazing educators in our presence. One is Dr. Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, our deputy superintendent from academic services. The other is Dr. Jeff Spiro, our chief academic officer. We're going to talk a little bit about and continue to explore some of the things we're doing regarding academic initiatives. I think it was well stated at the board meeting several weeks ago, when we were talking both with our executive directors and with our implementation processes and conversations about the strategic plan. The question was, what's different? What was different? What's different? We've heard strategic plan, we've heard initiatives, we've heard things related to trying to drive the academic needle. This is another opportunity for these two educators to present to you some of the major buckets that are currently underway as we look towards moving the academic needle on student achievement in the school year 2023-2024. I'll turn it over to both Dr. Cupid-McCoy, as well as Dr. Spiro.
Good afternoon, Chair Fisher, board members, Dr. Bernier, Attorney Dupree Bruno. Today's boardwork session will provide an overview of academic initiatives for the 2023-24 school year. Our PM III results released this summer, and the refreshed strategic plan were the primary drivers in formulating the initiatives. I'm Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, deputy superintendent, and to my right is...
I'm Dr. Jeff Spiro, chief academic officer.
And we are your presenters today. Prior to today, there were three presentations shared that provided context for today's workshop. After reviewing our PM III data, and again, reviewing the strategic plan, it was evident that we needed to refine our processes and reestablish clear expectations for teaching and learning. At the August presentation by the principal supervisors, a question arose, and that question was, as Dr. Bernier just mentioned, what's different? So, in answering that question, I'd like to expand on that a little bit. I'd like to share that we've narrowed our focus to teaching the benchmarks at the appropriate rigor, we've established and conveyed clear expectations around instruction to our school leaders, and we will monitor those expectations for fidelity of implementation. Earlier in July, Ms. Marks, the director of accountability, shared the raw data as reported by FLDOE, and after an in-depth analysis, the principal supervisors shared a more comprehensive approach that we embarked on this year. A subsequent presentation was shared by Dr. Savage, and he addressed the strategic plan and our scorecards. And combined, all of this is what guides our work in academic services. It's important to note that while we have a strategic roadmap, and that's important, the day-to-day work actually happens in the classroom. So, it's our teachers and our school leaders who are an integral part of getting the work done. It is important that our school leaders are providing actionable feedback to teachers so they can make real-time adjustments. There are four focus areas that encompasses the primary levers of our transformational work this year. So, what is our why? Our why actually is nestled in our district's vision, and that is to be a world-class school system. So, as such, if we want to become a world-class school system, we must examine our current practices and make adjustments along the way. The four focus areas listed here must be monitored, and we must check for not just implementation, but effectiveness of impact. As a reminder, while the focus areas provides the strategy, the real evidence occurs in what's happening at the schools and our actual outcomes. Our first primary lever is reading by grade three. Students reading by grade three is actually an attainable goal, but it requires transformational work within our organization. And this level of work is sometimes very uncomfortable, because it requires us to change our current practices, and sometimes it requires us to embrace different approaches, but those approaches must be grounded in valid research. We recognize that the foundational work actually begins before our students enter kindergarten. So, providing opportunities across our district, as well as throughout the community, to strengthen foundational skills is absolutely necessary for students to become a good reader. In addition to our early childhood offerings at the elementary sites and at the early childhood centers, as a district, we must expand our reach and collaborate with external In the spirit of expansion, we have partnered with the Early Learning Coalition, and again, this speaks to the expansion of our reach, so that we can prepare our students ahead of time, prior to entering kindergarten. As you review this slide, which I will not read what's on it, but I do want to highlight just a few of the bullets here. Again, we've had multiple meetings with the leadership of the Early Learning Coalition, and one of the topics we talked about is how do we ensure the work that is done at their sites really is in preparation for our students entering kindergarten? So, we have discussed bringing together their coaches and talking about the experiences here at our kindergarten sites, and then providing opportunities for them to actually come in and interact with kindergarten teachers, see what it's actually like. The purpose for that is for us to then debrief and talk about, is there alignment? And if not, what adjustments do we need to make? Students who matriculate through the Early Learning Coalition, as well as other early providers, they actually are our pipeline. So, the more information we can share, the better positioned our students are to be ready for kindergarten. This is actually a rather exciting venture for us, again, because this is our pipeline, and we've had really productive conversations with the leadership of the Early Learning In evaluating how we are going to grow as a district, how we're going to engage in transformational work, so that our students are reading by grade three, there are multiple areas that we need to address. So, engaging with the Early Learning Coalition is simply one aspect of that. Another aspect is we need to take a really close look at evaluating what we currently do in pre-K through second grade. And to do that, we're going to delve into that a little deeper, and Dr. Spiro is going to walk us through that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cupid-McCoy. And just like students, adults learn in different ways as well. And so, the approach by the teacher matters in the classroom, and as we're talking about reading by third grade, having various approaches matter as well. Dr. Cupid-McCoy just talked to us about the work that we're doing with the Early Learning Coalition, how we're getting pre-K ready to be kindergarten-ready. A piece of work that we're undertaking, that we consider to be legacy work, really inside of this district, is the work we're getting ready to undertake with a K-2 audit and redesign of our curriculum. We have engaged with an external partner called Public Consulting Group, they're called PCG, and they are going to be in the process of auditing our pre-K, I'm sorry, K-2 curriculum, working with our stakeholders, looking at all of our resources, looking at our instructional guides, looking at our curriculum maps, looking at our scope and sequence, and working with our internal experts, such as district curriculum, our ELL team, our ESE team, our school-based specialists, our teachers and our school administrators. We are going to be engaged in a journey to really look at all components of K-2 curriculum. We want to make sure that the resources that we have, our instructional guides, all of that is tied to the best standard, because simultaneously, we are going to be engaging with the University of Florida, the Lassinger Center, and we are going to be working with our teachers and our administrators and our coaches around the science of reading. So, as we look at the K-2 curriculum, as we're doing that audit and that redesign, the underpinning of all of that is around literacy. And that's a very important piece, because as we look at the professional development that's being provided to teachers, professional development for coaches and our administrators, it is all around the science of reading. Also, as we're doing this audit and this redesign, we have an opportunity to really see the effectiveness of the implementation of our work, as well as the effectiveness of the impact, meaning, are we truly having an impact on student achievement? Come the end of the day, this is all about making sure students are ready, and our goal is reading by third grade. So, part of that, when we look at our resources, we're also then going to be looking at our assessments. The assessments that we give in K1 and 2, are they really providing for us the data that teachers really need to make in-time decisions around instruction to positively impact quality of instruction, as well as making sure that we are moving the student achievement level, needle? If you look at the table that's on your screen, there are really five phases with the work that we're engaging with, with Public Consulting Group, PCG. We're in between Phase 1 and Phase 2 right now. We have had a number of meetings with this company, this external partner, where they've met with our curriculum team, including our English language learner team, including our ESC team. They're at the table as we're looking at this audit and redesign. We have developed a timeline, how we're going to begin this audit, what that means with teachers, how are we engaging teachers in this process, because the teacher voice is going to be the centerpiece of the work that we do. But also, at the same time, as we're looking at the curriculum assessment mapping and the design, how are we then underpinning all of that with professional development? So, you'll see phases 3, 4, and 5. As those phases are happening, at the same time, our teachers and our administrators are getting professional development, not only in the area of science of reading, but then also in the redesign of our K1 and 2 curriculum. So, the team will work with our external partner, we will develop a unit of instruction. That unit of instruction will be designed with teacher input, principal input, coaches' input. We will then implement that unit, and then we will get real-time feedback from teachers that are saying, here's what's working well with this unit, here's what we would like to see that's missing, and we then go ahead and make adjustments, so that as we reteach this in the future, those adjustments are made. So, 3, 4, and 5 are really interwoven into each other, and again, with the underpinning of professional development. The green box here is what we feel is the most important. What makes this different? What's different when you're doing an audit and a redesign? It is the teacher feedback. Dr. Cupid-McCoy and I, in the next couple of weeks, are going to see a video from she and I, where we're going to do a video explaining what is going to be happening with our K1 and 2 audit, and we're going to be sending that to our teachers. So, our teachers know. Teachers are going to give input via surveys. Teachers are going to give input via focus groups. They're going to be invited to be part of the process, because we want to develop this work with them, not to them. And so, that piece is why we wanted to highlight that. Similarly, our principals are also at the table. Today, this week, we're having our curriculum principal meetings. Yesterday was elementary, and today's elementary, and part of the agenda was introducing principals today to the K1 and 2 audit and redesign to the timeline, so that they understand what is happening moving forward as well. So, Dr. Cupid-McCoy talked about our Early Learning Coalition work, gave you a high level that we're getting ready to do an in-depth audit of K1 and 2. Now, she's going to talk to you a little bit about our partnership with the University of Florida, what we're doing in the area of science of reading.
So, I know that we're all aware that teachers actually have the highest effect size on student achievement, and that's a given. So, as we forge ahead with this venture of reading by grade three, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that our teachers are fully equipped with the instructional techniques needed to create good readers. So, in addition to the redesign that Dr. Spiro just referenced, a segment of our instructional staff will engage with some professional learning from the University of Florida's Lassinger Center, and the emphasis is on the science of reading. We have gone around and around and around in education as to what we believe are the best practices in teaching and reading. The focus, the emphasis, the research has always supported the strategies and techniques taught through the science of reading, and so, that's where we are placing our emphasis. We want to make sure that we provide teachers with the tools they need, and we want to ensure that administrators are also given the support, so they recognize what is good reading instruction, and if by chance it's absent, they too have the tools necessary to coach teachers. The focus of the professional development from the Lassinger Center will be on small group instruction. You know, when you think about instruction, you have whole group direct instruction, you have individualized work that teachers do with students. But we want to be very strategic with our approach, and the emphasis here is on small group instruction. And typically, you can have anywhere from four to six students with a teacher where they're working on specific skills. As it relates to the training for the science of reading, this will provide teachers the opportunity, again, to provide that individualized attention to our students. It is what we refer to as purposeful small group instruction, and the focus is on reading fluency, targeted assessment, explicit word instruction, reading for meaning, and connecting reading and writing. Now, ideally, it would be great to have all of our elementary teachers trained. That's not a viable option for us right now. So, again, we have to be deliberate with our rollout, and maybe at a later date, we can revisit and see how we might be able to scale. But in the meantime, 300 of our K-2 teachers will participate in this training/professional development for small group instruction. That particular group of teachers will attend three face-to-face literacy institutes, and they will receive instructional materials, they will have access to online literacy modules, they will engage in five-in-person job embedded coaching, and they have access to the Flamingo Literacy App, which has a plethora of resources. The good thing about this particular professional development is that we know it is supported by reliable research coming out of the Lassinger Center from the University of Florida. So, how did we determine who would be selected to participate in the initial rollout? I am so thankful you asked that question. What we did was we took a look at our PM III English Language Arts results, and that was the basis for the selection. Fifteen schools have been identified, and the training dates have been predetermined in conjunction with us and the University of Florida. So, what's going to happen in this training? So, the university uses a terminology, the Flamingo Literacy Playbooks, and that is what's used to sort of encapsulate the small group training, and that's what this group of teachers will engage in, in terms of professional learning. So, this is targeted training. We've said that. I mentioned that we have about 300 K-2 teachers who will be participating. We will also have all of our elementary principals, elementary, middle, and high school assistant principals who support reading instruction will also participate in this professional learning experience. They will learn how to instruct and assess students in phonological awareness, early decoding, advanced decoding, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Earlier, I referenced that it was important for our administrators to understand what effective reading instruction looks like, and I can't underscore that enough, and so, as a result of that, they too will become learners in this process, and those dates too have been identified in collaboration with us and the University of Florida. Literacy, while we often think of it in terms of English Language Arts, literacy is a skill that spans all content areas, and that's an important distinction to make, because as students become good readers, he or she is more apt to be a successful student with other content material.
Thank you, Dr. Cupid-McCoy. So, we just outlined to you three specific strategies for reading by third grade, the work we're doing with the Early Learning Coalition, to really focus on pre-K, our K-2 audit that we discussed around our resources, our curriculum materials, our assessments, as well as the implementation of the science of reading for K1 and 2, including the training of administrators and our literacy coaches as well. In the area of middle school, our middle school leaders are beginning to engage with our teachers around coaching, and our coaching this year, as Dr. Cupid-McCoy began this session, is all around the benchmark alignment. We have narrowed our focus to do nothing other than across our entire K-12 spectrum to focus on the benchmarks. What's the language of the benchmarks? What are they asking students to do? And does the student task match or mirror what the benchmark is asking for the students? So, that is the lens, the narrow lens we're using for coaching, and that's what's happening in middle school as well. In addition, in middle school, we are encouraging our middle school students to take high school courses beyond algebra and geometry, with the goal of providing more opportunity in their schedule as well. So, that's the work that's happening in middle school. When we get to high school, we have some very specific strategies that we're using by cohort. First, when you were doing your strategic plan refresh, one of the pieces of data that was shared with you was the students indicating they had a lack of connectiveness with the schools. And so, in effort for this ninth-grade cohort that began, we wanted to do things differently, to change that perspective from the student's lens. So, this year, all high schools implemented an onboarding at all 15 high schools. Historically, in the past, many high schools had something before the school year began. They would have a freshman onboarding, welcome back, and for those students that could attend, they had the opportunity to engage in that onboarding, to learn about the schools. We really thought that was then by happenstance, the students would get an opportunity to understand what's happening in the school, as opposed to a systemic approach. This year, during the first week of school, all of our high schools had a freshman orientation, and they were really focused on these five areas that are up here on the screen, and it just provided an opportunity for, right out of the gate, for our students to get acquainted with schools and feel connected with our schools. There were four major areas in the freshman orientation that are all of our schools focused on, and they could have added more, but this was the framework that all of our schools should have engaged our students with. I'm not going to read all of them to you, but I'm going to highlight a few of them. First off, when we talk about the tour of the building on the left, that's all about creating a safe and predictable environment for our students. They need to understand what is the lay of the land of the building, who are the key people in the building, and then the how-tos. Where do I come in when I sign in late? How do I get breakfast? How do I get lunch? What do I do for homework? So, all of that bottom, when you think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that's really the safe and secure environment was the intent of that, the one on the left. On the right was the conversation around, how do we help students become on-time graduates, graduate with their cohort? There's a whole conversation around the importance of being in school, the importance of monitoring your work, but then also, we took students through the exercise, how do you calculate your grade point average? How do you calculate your GPA so you have that ownership in your work? Students were also given a tour of Naviance. You know, Naviance is our college and career tool that we're using with students, with families, also exposing them to scholarships as well. And then, students had the opportunity to learn, what does it mean to be a Bright Futures graduate? How do I qualify for Bright Futures? That was provided to the students and that orientation. We will revisit those topics again at semester. So, at semester, students once again will have the opportunity to recalculate their GPA, go through Naviance one more time, talk about Bright Futures, so that we can continue to keep that in the forefront of our freshmen as they matriculate through high school. The other two sessions that were provided for our students were in the areas of student services. What do I do if I need help? How do I ask for help in the classroom? How do I ask for help in the school if I need tutoring? What happened if I have some wellness needs that I need to be taken care of? How do I ask for help? It was important for us to teach that system to students so they knew, so there was not a guessing. We also talked to students about social media etiquette. Many adults and most students... Many adults and most students are on social media. And that digital footprint does have an impact on post-high school. We also understand there are careers in social media now. So teaching students as well about etiquette on social media, proper use inside of a school, what does that mean? That was also taught during that onboarding. And finally, under the spirit, culture, and traditions, we made sure students understood how they can be connected to schools with clubs, with athletics, making sure they had an opportunity to speak to sponsors and coaches so that they had the opportunity to sign up and be engaged. We want students outside of the classroom to be engaged in an activity to feel connected to the school. So that was one thing that was different this year was a district-wide expectation for freshman onboarding during the start of the school year. Here's what else is different in the world of high school. As we reviewed data over the summer, and the data reminded us that early intervention of corrective action was absolutely necessary for student success. Traditionally, students are provided an interim report, a progress report at the four-and-a-half-week mark. That allows students and parents to understand, I'm halfway through the first quarter, how is my students doing academically? Some schools in the past had tight expectations on what they would do with that interim report or that progress monitoring tool. And others just disseminated that and hoped that something would happen with that data with families. However, this year, we have district-wide expectations around the use of interim reports as an intervention that was conveyed to all of our high schools, and we are currently monitoring it. So last week, September 13th, was the first interim report. It was the first progress monitoring. The expectation is for schools to work with students that have a D or an F and to provide some sort of intervention for them. So let me give you an example. Student has a D or an F on their interim report or their progress monitoring report. The staff connects with that student. The staff also connects with the parent. And with the parent and the student, they provided guided options for the student. Do you want to be with Connect With Lee? Connect With Lee is that one-on-one live tutoring. Or do you need to have back on track? Do you need to do a credit recovery where in the evening or after school, we're engaging with you on credit recovery? But let's say student says, no, I'll do Connect With Lee, which then gives me that supplemental support in a very specific content area. Remember, Connect With Lee are by our teachers. It's live. It's one-on-one. It was actually one of the strongest strategies we've had come out of COVID that we've continued to use and help of student achievement. So a student would be assigned Connect With Lee. And then the school would assign a support person who would monitor the work of that student as they were going through Connect With Lee. That support person could be a teacher, a mentor, a school counselor. That support person would follow up to make sure the student was attending Connect With Lee. They would also determine whether or not that intervention was working. Was there a difference in the student's attendance at school? Are there academic achievement at school? And if the intervention was working, you would continue with the Connect With Lee. But if it was not working, then that school support person would work with the student and the family to try another intervention because we want to have that early intervention to prevent a student from getting behind academically. And specifically in the area of ninth grade, we want students to get off on the right foot. This process will occur at the end of the quarter. It will occur again at the following interim report in November, and then at the semester as well, and then again at the third quarter. When you go in the academic services room, we have the dates listed up on our board, or important dates of the year that we're monitoring. Our principal supervisors are working with each school to ensure that there is a plan in place. Part of the graduation data check conversations we have when we go by cohort will be, talk to us about the students that are in these intervention programs. Who are those students? How are they being successful? How do you know? Show us the data on that. So there is a monitoring component that happens at the school level, but also at the district level, as the goal is to make sure that our students do not fall below on a 2.0. I also want to make sure you, announce to you, we also have been provided ACT and SAT support through the year with Connect With Lee. We did that last year. We're starting that again this year on October 2nd. It's to help our students get prepared before that first national assessment. So students who need ACT or SAT support can get that through Connect With Lee. So, and a little piece of data for you. So as of the start of the year, we've had 150 students engage in nine sessions of Connect With Lee so far. We will now, since the data went out for interim reports next week, or last week, we will then pull the data now and see, how has that increased each week? So we are monitoring that data as a district. Dr. Cupid McCoy, Algebra.
And here too, let the fun begin again. So Algebra I is offered at both the middle and high school levels. However, in our district, the majority of our students successfully navigate Algebra I at middle school. Now you will see students in ninth grade taking Algebra I. And there are a number of reasons that that could occur. But I will say this, if a student has matriculated through our system and he or she has taken Algebra I in ninth grade, it means that we really need a very different approach to instruction to allow that student to be successful. I'd like to reiterate again that part of what we're doing is considered transformational work. And transformational work is sometimes very uncomfortable, but it's an absolute necessity if we intend to achieve different outcomes. So our approach in Algebra I is different. And that means that we have an expectation that our students will engage in the use of manipulatives to help them understand the concepts. Most teachers teach mathematics, let me reframe that. Some teachers teach mathematics from an abstract level only. Algebra is one of those content areas where students really need a variety of avenues to understand the concepts so they can become successful. Again, all of our decisions are data-driven. So I want to reemphasize that we took a look at our PM data, we took a look at our Algebra data, and we recognize that we must, not that we want to, not that maybe we can, but that we must instruct using a different methodology so students can really grasp the content. So here's the shift that's occurring this year. We want our teachers to use a strategy referred to as concrete, representational, or abstract, or sometimes referred to as CRA. This strategy allows learners to grapple with abstract mathematical concepts through concrete objects and visual representation. And this is actually a research-based approach to better support conceptual understanding because it allows students to touch and manipulate objects as well as represent their understanding in a visual format. CRA creates a solid foundation for students to engage with the same content at an abstract level. And you'll get an opportunity a little later in this presentation to see how that works. Hence, the Algebra tiles that are on this slide, right? But before we get to be in a learner, if you will, I do want to share that over the past few years, that we've noticed the significant gaps in our students' understanding. And so to help with that, our curriculum and instruction, they've been providing our teachers with opportunities to support students. This summer, 50 of our teachers across K-12, they attended a state conference for Florida's best benchmarks for mathematics. And there, that group of teachers received more in-depth training on the best instructional practices. And yes, one of those practices was the use of Algebra tiles. So in addition to those 50 teachers who attended that state training, this summer, we've had several of our teachers attend our math series here where they too were trained on the use of manipulatives. And throughout this school year, we will provide additional opportunities for training. If a principal has a teacher that needs a refresher, he or she simply needs to contact the curriculum and instruction department, and we will be happy to provide the additional support for our teachers. This is probably the only slide I'm going to read to you. Students learn and utilize arrays to help them understand and perform multiplication starting at grade three. Using Algebra tiles allows students to make connections to foundational understanding of operations and numbers. So in this particular example, the students here would utilize place value blocks to build arrays and solve multiplication problems using concrete objects. This visual of an array helps you to make the connection between elementary mathematics and secondary mathematics. All right, so for the next couple of minutes, we are all, the emphasis is on, we are all going to attempt to be learners in this process, okay? So you are now a student. In front of you, you have Algebra tiles. You should each have a bag that looks like this. So I'd like you to open up the bag and let's explore, and then I'll explain to you what the tiles represent. Now mind you, this is not direct instruction in mathematics. I most certainly do not want anyone to be confused by that, nor will anyone be. This is an opportunity for us to become learners and just gain an understanding of what a student might experience on any given day in an Algebra class. Within your bags, you should have three distinctly different types of Algebra tiles. You have tiny little squares. You have something that's rectangular. And then you have something that looks more like an actual square. The smallest of the squares represents a value of one, or just a value of one. It has two sides. The red side is a negative value. The yellow side is a positive value. And please feel free to touch and manipulate your tiles. The rectangular tile, the one that looks like this, represents an unknown value, which is often represented as x or variable. Here too, the red side is negative. The green side is positive. The largest square that looks like this, this tile represents x squared. The red side is negative, it's a negative value. The blue side represents a positive value. Dr. Spiro, I'm going to ask for your help in a minute. I want you to hold that up, please. That's the blue, that's the positive side of x squared. What I'd like to do now is demonstrate, remember, we said that this tile represents x. And so if we have the length by width, x times x gives us x squared. I'll try that one more time. This represents x squared. We indicated that this tile represents x. So when we multiply the length times the width, x times x, we get x squared, right? All right, are we ready to move on? So you also have at your tables, something that looks like this. And in a classroom, we would refer to this as a product map. This provides sort of a space, safe space, if you will, to allow students to use the Algebra tiles and work through a process. So now what we're going to do is, I'm going to show you how to multiply linear binomials together. And I just wanted to explain that it's linear because it has a value of x without an exponent, so it's just an x. And it's a binomial because it has two terms. For those of us who may not necessarily be mathematically inclined, I thought this was important to denote. So as we practice on our product map, we're going to multiply 2x plus 3 and x plus 2. And when we're done, because we're multiplying, we will end up with a product, right? That's the academically correct term. We will end up with a product that is a quadratic expression. We're multiplying by binomials, and we will end with a product that is called a quadratic expression. So now, let's try to practice with the product map. We're going to represent our first binomial. We're going to do this across the top using our Algebra tiles. So let's line them up across the top. And we will use two of these across the top, two x's. So would you assist me?
Of course.
So these two x's would be across the top. And in addition to that, we would have three of our individual small tiles. So the two green across the top, three individual tiles. In order to expedite this process, I will no longer continue to demonstrate this way. I will go through as is on the presentation. So if we were to continue this process, can you flip through? What we, hold right here, please. What would occur is as you multiply x times x, you get x squared. And you continue the process, and we complete the array. Now what's important here is that students will then have to combine like terms, simplify. And as we go through this process, we come out with x squared, 2x squared plus 7x plus 6. I'm going to give you a moment to digest that before we move on. Okay, this is the first component of this strategy, which is the concrete. Not every student will engage in using this aspect of this strategy. Let's go to the next. The second component of the strategy is the representational. And it varies slightly from the student actually manipulating the Algebra tiles. But it from the student actually manipulating the algebra tiles, but it gives them this frame from which to work. So you can see that we would label the array, the columns, one column would have 2x plus 3, and the other is x plus 2. We would go through the multiplication process. So as you complete each of the boxes, you will see that we multiply, and then we will add like terms, and our answer becomes the same, the product is the same. Completely different way of working the same identical problem, because Jeff and I have different ways of processing, but it gives us both an opportunity to learn the concept. The final component of this strategy is the abstract. So for DePree Bruno, who probably will go directly to the abstract, what happens here is we will distribute the binomials, alright? And as we take you through this process, so you will distribute 2x to the binomial x plus 2, and then we distribute 3 to the binomial x plus 2. Again, we'll multiply, we simplify, we combine like terms, and you see the progression, all three components end with the same product. But again, a different way of processing for students. So as you walk into a classroom, you may or may not see all students respond in the same way, but it is important to know that the teacher provides the opportunity for students. Now, the key here is if I am a student who understands the concept through the concrete, I still have to be able to demonstrate my understanding in the abstract. So my teacher works with me and helps me to be able to transfer those skills, because I can't go into a state assessment with my algebra tiles, right? I have to be able to look at that problem and do it in an abstract. But because I've learned the strategy, depending on if I have scratch paper or not, I may be able to do an array, I may be able to do something to help me get to the correct So I hope that this helps provide some perspective to the expectation that we have for our algebra students, particularly since, again, if I'm taking algebra as a ninth grade student, I really need a different way to absorb the content to allow me to be successful.
Thank you, Dr. Cupid McCoy, well done. We've talked to you about reading by third grade, high school cohort tracking, algebra, the use of algebra tiles, or CRA, as Dr. Cupid McCoy just demonstrated for you. And our final initiative we want to talk to you about is the work that we're doing with our principal supervisors. So in the previous slides, we connected the dialogue to progress monitoring data results and the strategic plan. So how do the principal supervisors now fit into this conversation? Well, we know that the principal is the, has the second highest impact on student achievement, teachers are first, and our principal supervisors have a direct connection to our school leaders. So it's important that our principal supervisors are well-prepared and equipped to coach and model effective leadership practices that lend themselves to three very specific areas, the areas of student achievement, school culture, and professional development. So consequently, we have engaged with the Wallace Foundation to facilitate professional learning for our principal supervisors. And we know that professional development is critical at all levels in the organization. And this year, we have continued our journey with our Wallace Foundation that we began two years ago. And our consultant with Wallace is a gentleman by the name of Glenn Pethel. And Glenn has designed for us a very specific school district elite county professional development for specifically our principal supervisors. And that it is tailored for us in the area of principal supervision, principal effectiveness, best practices, and support for principal development, as well as curating a suite of tools and strategies that our principal supervisors can use. So our principal supervisors come together with Dr. Cupid McCoy and myself, as well as Lynn Harrell, the executive director for professional development, and we work on this training together as our team. And the goal is to make sure that we are consistent with what the research says around principal supervisors. The idea is to make that iteration from an executive director to more of a principal supervisor role. So from not just support, but support and accountability as well. The model that the Wallace Foundation uses, that we have been studying with them, is a model of standards for principal supervisors that was developed by the Council of Chief State School Officers. And that's part of the research that the Wallace Foundation uses. And they provide for us clear and concise indicators to help us move this work moving forward. And I would be remiss if I publicly didn't thank Lynn Harrell for the work that she has done in organizing this for our principal supervisors. It is something that Dr. Cupid McCoy and I asked for her to do, is to find a training that is research-based embedded, that could be job embedded for us as well, so that we can help transform the work of our principal supervisors. So we want to give you a little bit of a glimpse on the work that we have been doing with our principal supervisors. First, we began with the research. What does the research say around principal effectiveness? And our principal supervisors engaged in reading research, engaged in conversation with the Wallace consultant around what the research says. We reviewed job descriptions from around the countries that were tailored toward a principal supervisor position, and talked about the differences between an executive director, our job description, and the principal supervisors that are happening across the nation in some of our largest districts. We looked at the model standards that I talked about with the Council of Chief State School Officers. We dissected those indicators to see if, where those indicators fit into our job descriptions, or were there gaps that we needed to fill in? And yes, there are gaps that we need to fill in. And this was the framework, the foundation, how we began our work, by looking at the research. From the research, we then began to talk about the practice of the principal supervisor. And our Wallace consultant was able to put us in touch with principal supervisors from across the country that they have worked with. We had sessions with those principal supervisors that talked about the iteration in their districts, how they went from an executive director role towards a principal supervisor role, what that had, the impact inside of the schools, and ultimately, the impact on student achievement. What did that journey look like? And we spoke to a number of districts across the country that allowed our principal supervisors to really be vulnerable and ask questions from other leaders that were peers to really deepen their knowledge and their tools in this specific area. We also continued the work that we started last year with blended coaching. Coaching certainly is a component of being a principal supervisor. So continuing that conversation to embrace a coaching lens was an important underpinning. So after the research and after the practice, then we wanted to talk about what does this look like when we put this work into action? And our Wallace Foundation worked with us on a protocol that's called paired observations, where during the course of this year, our principal supervisors will observe each other, give feedback to each other on their work with principals, and we're looking to build a more of a systemic approach that is predictable. So it should not be just who is that individual, who is that specific principal supervisor you work with, but rather, we should have a systemic approach through all levels on the work of our principal supervisors. And ultimately, here is the theory of action that we are working with. If each principal supervisor increases the instructional and the leadership capacity of the principals they work with through support and accountability, then we should have a positive impact on the quality of the instruction that is happening in the classroom, which ultimately will lead to improved student achievement as well. And that is the work that we have been doing with our principal supervisors, and that is ongoing. So we have the honor today to share with you, all of these are very high levels, certainly, the work we're doing around reading by third grade, the work we're doing with our high school cohort tracking, the instructional changes in the area of algebra, and the work we're doing with our principal supervisors. At this time, we will turn it over to the superintendent for his comments and our school board discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Spiro and Dr. Cupid McCoy, we appreciate your time, and I'm hoping that we didn't undo all of our education in algebra. There are several different opportunities there that, one, I get very, very clearly, the box was very helpful. The distributive power is where my algebra teacher lost me, and it took me a long time to learn how to use algebra blocks. But again, it's about a different approach. So you've asked, and I do like the first slide that Dr. McCoy and Dr. Spiro provided to us, this is ongoing sequence of activities for us to continue to talk about what we're doing. So let's talk a little bit about that. So you've heard about measurement and data collection. It's not just enough to meet with students, we need to know how many we're meeting with. There will be follow-ups to how many students are in trouble at the progress report time, how many are still in trouble at the end of the nine weeks, the end of, in between as we move towards semester. This is all new work, and I want to keep going back to something that I said very early on in the early part of my tenure. For, as we develop our executive directors, and we develop our principals, and we continue to help both the skill and the will of our entire organization, this is not a gotcha. This is an opportunity to grow. This is an opportunity to continue to learn and continue down a path towards being an instructional leader. And our leaders and teachers are already on that path. But earlier on, we talked about, when we were talking about the strategic plan, the idea of just pointing to a goal and saying to someone, "Get there," is not an appropriate way to go about the development of our people. There's the goal, that's what we're looking for, and now through a collaborative solution-making process, we're starting to build the repertoire of how we get there. How do we get there as principals, assistant principals, teachers, paraprofessionals? And how do we start making those things happen to move the academic needle? This will not occur without pain, this will not occur without great joy, it will not occur without all the range of human emotions, because if I have all the skill, then great, and we can continue to develop that person. But for others, this will be a significant investment in their learning process in order to help move their education, their educational facility, their building, the students contained within it, and our teachers forward. We stand at the ready, like we ask our teachers to differentiate support in the classroom, the team that you see represented here today, as well as those individuals who've presented to you prior. We stand to work with our principals collaboratively to determine best paths forward, and we know there's going to be days where this is too much. There's going to be days where it's not enough. There's going to be days that are going to be very difficult. There's going to be days where it fits, and there's going to be days where it doesn't fit, considering everything else going on in a school building. It's not about any one day. It's really about an approach towards how we utilize our individuals to get the most out of our school buildings and the most out of our children, and at the same time, most importantly, reap the satisfaction, really, of a job well done. I'm excited about what this means, I also have a little bit of trepidation about what this means, because this is what we said before when we said, you know, what's different? This is what's different. And different is hard. It's an old book, "Who Moved the Cheese?" Right? We're moving people's cheese. And when we move people's cheese, we have to know we also have to support them, because we're changing the map, we're changing the roadmap, we're changing the path, still leads the same direction. But we have to consider and hope and know that this team and the team that they represent in academic services will continue to support our principals. And as our principals feedback, we will utilize a speak-up, listen-up culture. As our principals speak up, we are listening up, we will determine solutions together. And I think this is important for me to say. The reason for that is the solutions have to be jointly created, because if they're not, and they don't work, then it will be the academic services team and the superintendent's fault. We want to own the solutions together, so that when or if they don't work, we own that process of what we built, and we own the process of also correcting it and moving it forward. And when it does work, what we do very well is what our principals do very well, when great things happen at their school building, what do they do? They step back and they give all the credit to their faculty and staff. If this works, this team, myself, will step back and we will give all the credit to the school buildings where the work is truly accomplished, and give those instructional leaders their just rewards and what they deserve in terms of accolades and other ways that we can help reward that performance. So I'm just excited about what this means for our future. It's another established sort of roadmap along the way as we continue to work with all of you, so you can understand more about the mystery that occurs on the other side of the hall in this district office in academic services, and sort of demystify what's going on and what the work of those individuals is on a daily basis. So thank you to Dr. Spiro and Dr. Cupid McCoy, and all three of us stand ready for any questions or board discussion.
Thank you for that, Dr. Cupid McCoy and Dr. Spiro. Board, just be aware, we're a little over on time, however, this topic's very important, so understand that. So comments, questions for my fellow board members? Okay, Mr. Persons followed by Ms. Langford Fleming.
I just wanted to know, are you having good buy-in from all the parties as far as this is what we should do, want to do, or hopefully? I mean, because if they don't buy in, then it's not going to go as well. Or is it too early to even know that?
I would share that there's two things going on. One is it's a little early to know, and the processes are still very new, and anytime you're changing things, the initial response to it can be difficult. I also think that we're dealing with some outside influences right now regarding bargaining salaries, salaries of administrators, which are creating that unknown can sometimes create some additional angst. But the two individuals most close to it in terms of the staff implementing it, I'll certainly ask for their opinion as to where we are at this point.
Well, there are a number of components that we'd like to address. One, the Early Learning Coalition, that partnership, it's exciting work yesterday, buy-in on both ends from the school district, as well as the Early Learning Coalition, to make sure that we are deepening our work together, including with our teachers as well. The audit that we're getting ready to do in the K1 and 2 has just begun. The buy-in is the important part of the rollout. You only get one opportunity to roll this out and do it well. Hence why, Dr. Cupid McCoy, I want to do a video for all of our K1 and 2 teachers, so that they understand their role in this, on how they can give feedback, how they're part of the focus groups, hence why we talked to the principals yesterday and today. So the phase one of the K1 and 2 audit and redesign is going to be a slower part of the process, because we want to make sure all stakeholders really understand the work. Similarly, with the science of reading as well, our 15 schools, those principals are aware, those teachers are aware that the science of reading component, that training is coming. I cannot talk to you about the algebra, I've not spoken with our algebra teachers yet to tell you how they feel about the professional development and the algebra tiles. That's part of the classroom visits when we go to schools, we have some very specific classrooms that we observe, algebra is certainly one of those, so that would definitely be a piece of information I could bring back to you. And I would tell you, our principal supervisors, I mentioned it when I made the comments, they've been very vulnerable as learners. They want to grow in their roles from the executive director to a principal supervisor, so I would say the change for them has been, yes, their expectations are higher, their expectations for their roles are different, but they absolutely have embraced being a learner and a leader to make that change happen. Dr. Cupid McCoy, anything else? Okay. Ms. Langford Fleming?
So, Dr. Cupid McCoy, I agree with you. You made a great point when you were talking about partnering with our early learning facility. facilities, because it's really important that those facilities know what is a year from now. They, those children are going to be required to meet these standards. So, great point, and thank you for the presentation. With that being said, with the reading component that we talked about first, how many schools have a reading coach, one or two? Are they K through 2, then 3 through 5? Can you talk a little bit about that?
One of the changes we made last year, we have a primary reading coach and then a secondary reading coach as well. So, I would need to get you the data on how many of those positions are filled, how many have a pre-K, how many have a primary, and how many have an intermediate, so I could provide that in the Friday update.
All right, that would be great. My only concern is, I know that anytime that there's a new training, it, there's a lot of time involved and a lot of time outside of the classroom, even for our principals. I know they're already doing the high reliability school training. I think that's, I don't know how many days that is. But when you're talking about these three institutions that you said the teachers would go to, from the list of, I think, 14 schools, and then the principals, how much time are we talking about those three institutions taking up? And when are they going to be, when are they going to take place?
Dr. Spiro, Dr. Cupid-McCoy, let me address one of those issues, and that's the high reliability schools training. The high reliability schools training is at the end of its lifespan. We've had a number of schools very early become early adopters. It goes back to Chairman Person's question, you know, like, how are people accepting this? We had people get, and I was not here, we got people heavily involved in high reliability schools. There were a number of cohorts and things are moving through. We're down to the last cohort of people who have joined now, and, but our goal, but the goal of the district was to push, to get every one of our schools to work through that. So, high reliability doesn't impact everyone. Additionally, we added a managerial meeting to the principal's schedule, initially at the principal's request. There has since been an ask from the principals to revisit that decision. Again, that's what I go back to as we work through things collaboratively, and if they're going to speak up and say, "We think this is too much," then we have to be able to trade back and forth. And if what they requested is too often, or, you know, and we've had that conversation and will continue to have those dialogues with the principal leads, as well as the association presidents, so that we can, we can make sure that we're doing what we can. As to the buckets and how much time is invested, I'll turn it back to our academic services leaders.
The temporary dates that are set right now for the teacher training are scheduled for the end of October, and three additional dates were proposed in November. But one of the things that we're looking at is to verify that we do not have conflicts, so that a teacher doesn't have to choose between what he or she is attending. Those are the proposed dates that have been sent to us. We need to confirm and verify that that's when they will occur. More than likely, if memory serves me right, I believe those initial trainings are all-day trainings for the 300 teachers.
And I just asked that, because I know what I hear when, you know, through, through other teachers and principals, they don't like being out of the building for days and days on end. They feel like things start to unravel when that happens. So, that's why I was asking, we've got maybe too many trainings, but this seems so incredibly important, and maybe you're right, they, you meet them halfway and prioritize one over the other. The other thing I noticed was the freshman orientation. I love that idea. I know that in the last meeting, we talked about houses, and when freshmen come in and you get into your house, which is a new concept, and I know lots of, lots of schools in the private sector are doing that, and they take those freshmen and they stay with them all the way through their senior year, and then those children have the opportunity as a senior to become leaders in their own house. When we're talking about this freshman orientation, the tour of the building's great, the how-to-be-on-time graduate, and the student services portion, are we considering somehow to maybe, I just feel like after their freshman year, I don't want to see those students fall off the cliff and now they're all by themselves, because as somebody who has a junior, he's so different than he was when he was a freshman. So, are we maybe considering some way how to sort of keep that going with that freshman cohort or that class that you're talking about, and doing some kind of check-ins, even their sophomore year, to make sure that, hey, do you need help with filling out college resumes? Or have we got our SAT and ACT up? Have we filled out our, all of our things for our, like, our Bright Futures information? Is that something we can see this just to continue through their four years?
The goal of this is to monitor students from the time prior to them arriving to kindergarten all the way through. But specifically to your high school question, and I hope I'm not going to panic the high school principals. But last year, when we had senior graduation meetings, there was a lot of discussion about earlier monitoring, so that by the time you're into your senior year of a cohort, you're really working with very specific children that you know their story, because they've been with you over a period of four years. And you're, and you're working on very specific, and in some cases, very differentiated reasons that may prevent them from crossing the graduation stage within the four-year period as our state defines it. So, yes, beyond freshman year, there'll be the monitoring of sophomore, junior, and into senior year. I wouldn't say it becomes less intensive. What should happen with great monitoring of a freshman class as they move into sophomore, there should be less sophomores to monitor. However, you are, you make a great point, and I think it's worth stating out loud, there becomes more things to monitor. As students get older, as they move towards college and career readiness, whether it's dual enrollment, whether it's SAT, ACT, whether it's ensuring that they've met all the graduation requirements at the right level, they start to get scholarship opportunities, are we monitoring them for compliance with the NCAA? It doesn't get easier, but the idea would be, we have to put our eyes on our kids, we have to get to know them, and we have to shepherd them as part of a, as part of the family with the parents to bring them to the graduation stage. We also believe that Naviance and some of the other things that we're putting in place can help us with that process as well. Dr. Spiro, Dr. Cupid-McCoy, anything to add? Okay.
That's it, thank you.
I don't know where to start. I am just totally overwhelmed. I have sat at this table for 11 years, and I have never heard the level of presentations about what we are doing for kids that I have heard in the last 16 months. It is, to me, extraordinary. It is extraordinary to see what you all are doing back there in the, you know, in the other rooms back there. I mean, you hear people talk about what goes on the central office, and nobody knows, and there is no real evidence of what's, of anything, of any real import happening. I, I'm just, I am just thrilled. I have goosebumps. I have questions and comments. I mentioned to Dr. Cupid-McCoy before she even started that I had heard complaints from about, from the ESOL people about the fact that they felt they were being very successful in the work they were doing, and that by being put in a position of having to change what they were doing, that students were now failing, because they were responsible for transitioning to something that they felt wasn't working for their children. So, my comment is and question is, talking about transformation, we know this is going to happen. So, you know, the success comes from being able to respond to that pushback, because whether it's the principal who isn't communicating or providing the appropriate support, or the director who's responsible for that particular area doesn't understand or is not doing, you know, a good job supporting those, those people, that needs to be addressed. Oh, gosh. I listened to you talk about the PCG and the University of Florida, and I'm sitting here thinking, well, that was the whole idea behind the lab school. We don't need to do the lab school, because effectively, we're doing the lab school internally. I mean, we're essentially saying we're working with the highest need schools, we're trying proven strategies, effective strategies for learning, for the science of reading, for reconfiguring our curriculum. Effectively, we have done what the intention was of the lab school to do. I'm just, I'm just really blown away. I do have a question about the Early Learning Coalition. First of all, we did at one time have a direct pipeline between certain early providers and specific schools. Are we still focused on making certain that certain schools understand that they are driving towards certain elementary schools, and how does that fit into the proximity plan? Because if you create those linkages, and then the plan doesn't tolerate the movement of the students. So, that's one question. The other question was, and this is not for you to answer, but it refers back to something I said at a previous meeting, we really, is the Early Learning Coalition going to the legislature to say, "We need to do full-time pre-K?" And if they are, then we need to get on their bandwagon with that initiative. I loved the freshman orientation. I think you need to, I don't want to tell you what to do. I would love to see an orientation video for parents that tells the parents that this is what we're doing for kids, because there's really good information for parents in what you're doing in that, in that thing. This notion of going from executive director to principal supervisor, wow. You all who've sat here for just a very short period of time have no idea what it is like to see the lights go off at this table, in this building, in, in, in what's going on in this district. You have no idea what it is like to sit here, year after year, and hear the same thing over and over and over again, and without, without any evidence that, that something has, has transpired of real value for kids. I'm just, and which is not to say that people haven't worked incredibly hard, but they've worked at what they know without the kind of support they needed to develop as educators. And so, I'm just really excited for everybody, for everybody who's in the classroom in this district, and I want to thank you. Those are my comments.
Next up is Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. So, my take is a little bit different, and I'm going to start with Dr. Bernier. What you said during your comments was, and I have this in all caps, "If this works." I think your attitude, I think not your attitude, anyone's attitude when they approach an endeavor goes a long way toward dictating the outcome of that endeavor, so I would like to say "when this works," as opposed to "if this works." And that, please take my comments to be like my reviews of the superintendent. I don't offer criticisms of the superintendent, instead, I urge him. So, I'm going to urge you to push a little deeper here and push a little harder. Solda Story, do y'all know what that is? The multi-part podcast about Fontis and Pennell? It taught me a lot about reading and what we were doing wrong as a nation with reading. I think that they were doing a balanced approach to reading, which was a move away from the science of reading. Is that correct? And so, now we're moving back to the science of reading. The question that I have, that I know that a lot of teachers have, because I hear over and over again through the seven years I've sat on this board, is it's the flavor of the week. They're going to make us do this, and it's not going to work, and two or three years from now, we're going to be doing something different. So, my, my question is, how do we know this isn't the flavor of the week? And how can we help? And I'm not thinking that it is. The science of reading is, is real. Science is real. And I'm confident with phonics. I'm a little nervous about the decoding, because I thought that was a lot of what Fontis and Pennell did. They did a lot of decoding. I'm a non educator who's concerned that our teachers are going to be put through another flavor of the week. Am I making sense?
Absolutely. The team will be great. And if I misspoke and said, if I apologize for that word, I'm not fully scripted here, but great point.
I mean, you don't have to respond now, just understand that if, if you get some pushback, that might be what it is. Because like Ms. Morgan said, we've sat here, and sat here, and sat here, and heard, and heard, and heard, and we haven't seen that transformational change. So, as was mentioned, the work for teachers in this auditing process, the additional work associated with filling out those surveys and sitting in on the group feedback sessions, I get a little bit concerned about them, especially where we are in bargaining and where we are just as a culture in education in America. Slide 15, if we could, a little sarcastically, the irony of teaching a child how to sign in late while stressing the importance of attendance. I thought that was a little ironic. Pushing here, I'm pushing you. What here is actually supposed to engage 13 to 18-year-olds? I didn't know that a freshman orientation was a new thing. My kids had them. At least three of my kids had them. One of them did not, but three of my kids had them. So, freshman orientation, to me, is not a new thing. And as I look at this list, slide 16, I think is more about the kids. How many 13 to 18-year-olds did we talk to to find out what should be on the right side of that slide? Because I don't, this isn't engaging any of my kids. My kids will look at, at that list of things there, and they will give you a criticism for each one of them, why they're stupid, why they don't work, why they're not fun, whatever. So, how many 13 to 18-year-olds have we spoken to to get them more engaged? What do they need to see in their schools to be more engaged on a daily basis? And then, if we go back to 15, on the right-hand side, what are we doing for our high-level students? My own children, with the exception of Naviance, didn't need any of that. So, what are we doing for our higher-level students who've had this kind of guidance from day one in our buildings? Okay, that's it, in terms of pushing you. Algebra. My question is, what are we doing for the kids like me who don't respond to any three, any of the three approaches that you put out there? Because I didn't, and I'm going to tell a story that I probably shouldn't tell out loud in public, but I was sent to the principal's office when I took algebra in high school, because I called the teacher a hornpout. She had whiskers, and she looked to me like a hornpout. That's what I remember about algebra in high school. That's, that's it. That's all I remember. I, I didn't learn anything about it. And I'm not sure that algebra makes us world-class. I get that Florida makes us teach it, but I'm not sure it makes us world-class. Question, are we changing our executive director job descriptions to principal supervisors?
We are not currently changing the job description as we speak. We are looking at what our executive directors' role are. We are expanding their role, so that they can understand the larger concept, and, and then what we will do is we will work together along with them and our principals to potentially look at a new job description. A job description won't change anytime in the near future, but it will change at some point, as we also make some changes unrelated to academics. There are some other changes regarding evaluation of all employees that needs to be looked at seriously. I just don't have a timeframe for that, considering all the work that we're trying to accomplish, not just on the academic side of the house, but on the business side of the house as well.
Okay. And then, another question, you guys talked about the journey of existing principal supervisors who have sort of counseled our EDs to, to make the transition. You talked about their journey from ED to principal supervisor. How long did that journey take for those people? Like, how, what is, what are our executive directors looking at in terms of this transition?
Typically, anywhere from a three to five-year window was the transformation that occurred district-wide. We worked, we worked with some very large districts where they had principal supervisors, where they made that transformation.
Okay. All right. And then, again, you know, this was a wonderful presentation. I agree with Ms. Morgan entirely. It was a wonderful presentation. I just, why not be more wonderful by pushing a little bit harder on, on what you've done? And my final thing is, and this is random feedback, has nothing to do with what you said today, I've gotten feedback that the ACE training at the district for teachers has been phenomenal, and far better than the other trainings that we do. Apparently, there's collaboration, and they sit together at a table and talk and learn from each other, which is not, I don't know what they do at other trainings, but you need to know that your ACE training is top-notch. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Uh, Ms. Juvenelli?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I apologize for being late. I had another commitment, but, um, I got in on the tail of this, tail end of this, and this is great. Um, I actually would agree with Ms. Morgan and Ms. Patrica, because, you know, um, the presentation is excellent, and the ideas are needed. I look forward to the data and information that we gain from this, progress monitoring it, goal monitoring. I'd like to see something, you know, some information, and I, I want to see the, see, I want to hear from the, the staff on how they feel about it, and the customers, students, customers, and how, how it's benefiting them. Um, because we do have done a lot of talk, and then we don't seem to, you know, leave the, um, leave, leave where we started talking. We never really get very far. The progress is, is little. Um, and, and my concern is, you know, what we hear from the staff is that, "Well, they've given us this extra work and extra, uh, things to do, yet we don't get anything, we don't have the time to do it, we don't know where, when we're going to do it." So, I feel like they, they feel unsupported. And, um, so, I don't know how we navigate that and making sure that we're going to, we're behind them to support them, uh, on, on this, these changes that I think will be, that are needed. Um, I think it's, but my, my notes were just really about the, the progress monitoring, the goal monitoring, how, you know, what kind of feedback are we going to get from staff and our customers, our students? Because I think that's really important to know, is this the right direction? Are we doing this? And, um, let's get us there. You know, we, we see the, we see the direction, but we gotta, we gotta continue with it and making sure that everybody's collaborating together on it. Um, I think this is really all about good customer service. The orientation that was mentioned, um, and I don't think that, as a district, that we do that well, is we focus on the customer and good customer service and making sure, you know, if someone's not happy, how do we make them happy? You know, what are we doing wrong? What, what can we change to make it better? Um, I think that's just really important, and that was, that was my notes, just making sure that we have, we give them the guidance and the, and the path to success. So, I think this is a start, and I, I love it. Thank you.
Before I go, anyone else?
Real quick, Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, I have one question I forgot to ask. Did I hear you correctly, Dr. Cooper McCoy, when you said the majority of our students leave middle school having taken Algebra I?
The majority of our students who take Algebra I in middle school are successful.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else before I go? I'll, I'll make this real quick, because we're really over on time. So, a great presentation, I said, "Thank you." Um, it literally hits home for me, as I have elementary students, uh, learning right now multiplication, and then wanting algebra and about to go to high school. So, I, I appreciate that. Real quick, um, on first intervention, I think it was September 13th, I don't know if I, uh, heard this or not, is any of the PM1 data brought into that at that point?
No, this is their academic data, purely what's the, what's happening in their classes.
Okay. Literacy Institute, is that, uh, in-person or is that online? That you had mentioned.
There are three face-to-face in-person for the teachers.
Okay. Uh, real quick comment, Connect Lee, um, just wondering, I don't recall this, maybe this is for the Superintendent. Do we have, um, and I've seen it go around the newsletters, fantastic throughout the district, do we have any kind of just quick overview video or anything like that in regards to that?
I've not yet seen an overview video, but I'm sure we can get one together, um, so that we can appeal to people who are more multimedia, um, more mult, more motivated by multimedia.
Thank you. Uh, last thing, just again, um, I truly appreciate this, uh, the part when you get the stakeholder input, I truly, and this kind of goes to some of Ms. Patrica's comments and Ms. Juvenelli, I, I really hope we, we really listen to our teachers and really get buy-in, so, on this. Thank you for your presentation. Next up is going to be Item B3, which is Student Progression Plan, uh, just for member Juvenelli, so she's aware, I moved, um, Item B1 Policy Updates until after this.
Thank you so much.
So, um, thank you.
Mr. Fisher, you'll be happy, we're going to make up some time.
Thank you.
A pretty short presentation. So, we're here today to talk about the Student Progression Plan and the Secondary Course Catalog. We review this with the Board every year, um, and so this is our annual update. Ms. Brooks is not able to attend, as she is setting up for, um, College Night tonight, and Dr. Quisenberry is helping with principal training. So, it is Ms. Alavado and myself. So, first off, the Student Progression Plan has three components to it. So, the first part is the stu, in the Student Progression Plan, that's where you're going to find how students in elementary school, what the requirements are to be able to get to middle school, and then what the requirements are then for the middle schoolers to get to high school. This is also where a lot of our legislative updates, we wait, um, until that May session to see if any legislative updates will impact our current progression plan. Often it does. Um, and then you have the other two sections, the Middle School Course Catalog, that, um, lets our stakeholders know all of the courses that our district schools offer, um, and as well as the high school. And, um, this is like, uh, this, we start this in February, even though we're bringing it to you now, we start this in February, um, because we look at what courses are no longer being utilized, we look at the data of that. And then we also, um, look at the Florida Course Code Directory, and we look at the summary of changes, so what we anticipate to be changed as well. And then, um, we also, uh, put a form out so that all of our schools can enter courses that they no longer wish to use, or that they would like to see in their school. So, it goes through quite a few processes. So, we have, um, Career and Tech Ed, they review courses, our ESE department reviews courses, our ESOL department reviews courses, and the Curriculum Instruction reviews courses. So, that, that's how these three components come to be. We ensure that we follow all of the state statutes and regulations that are associated with all of the courses and all of the requirements for our students to matriculate from one grade level to another. We also, as I just mentioned, we have to look at the state Course Code Directory and ensure that the courses that we're using are actually in the directory. Um, and then, on top of all of that, we have to ensure that we have those courses in our Focus Scheduling System so that master schedules can be built. Um, you don't want a course in there that is no longer, that shouldn't be active. So, uh, those are the three things that we have to follow. In elementary, there were no legislative updates that required any updates for elementary. So, although we've had legislative updates, it didn't impact, impact elementary. In middle school, the only update is that we've been, for three years, for our advanced readers, we've been, um, slowly incorporating, uh, Global Perspectives, which is a Cambridge course. Um, so this year finishes out, uh, that our eighth graders, we added that eighth-grade course. So, now there's a course for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade for middle school, and that's what, was the update there.
And then for high school this year, we only had two updates. The first being that the legislative session, they removed the online requirement for students to graduate high school. The biggest change is typically, we would see that with an incoming cohort of students, they said this is for all students. So, any student sitting in our buildings right now, ninth through 12th grade, or student coming back to us who did not finish their senior year last year, they are waived from the online requirement. We are still waiting for the DOE to publish their official one-page graduation requirements so we can update our website. However, we have ensured that all of our Focus Systems have been updated, our Assistant Principals of Curriculum, our counselors, and this was part of what you need to be an on-time graduate, that we just heard Dr. Shapiro talk about as well. In addition, the other change to legislation is last year, Ms. Lori Brooks brought before the Board, that we had the volunteer work hours that could be part of. This year, they have combined. Last year, it was voluntary or work. Now it is you can combine those for the hundred hours. So, that went into effect as well. So, at high school, those were the only two changes. So, with that, as Ms. Houchen stated, while there may have been a lot of legislative changes this year, those were the only impacts that we had to our Student Progression Plan. So, with that, we will turn it over to Superintendent's comments and School Board discussion.
I don't have any comments at this time. I'm open to the discussion of the Board.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member comments, questions? Ms. Jordan?
Uh, thank you for this. Can you tell me what the Cambridge, is virtual school part of this? Because I thought that the Cambridge was only allotted for eighth grade in the virtual, and not given to, not allowing sixth or seventh grade.
So, virtual has Cambridge at the high school level, but they do not have Cambridge courses at the middle school level.
But yet, we offer it in brick-and-mortar schools.
Correct.
Why is that?
Um, well-
If we're, if they're our students, why do we not offer them the same?
So, Lee Virtual, um, they use the Florida Virtual Schools catalog. For example, their science doesn't match ours as well. So, they have comprehensive science, and we have earth-space life and physical science at the middle school level. So, um, the courses don't always match up.
Mr. Chair, can I weigh in? Um, Lee County Virtual School is, made some decisions early on in their, in their birth to utilize one form of online curriculum, and that is Florida Virtual's curriculum. Every, um, district virtual school has options to then adopt additional curricula. What you'd never want to do, and what the struggle has been, and we are getting there, is you don't want students to be in Florida Virtual for math, and then in another thing for science. What we have to look for are other curriculums that support specifically foreign languages that, that Florida Virtual does not have. So, if I was to move out into, uh, Aventha, who's another vendor, um, if I was to move into their curriculum for Mandarin Chinese, I would never come back to Florida Virtual for that particular course. There are other organizations and other curriculum vendors in the virtual world that do AP, IB, and other words. We'd have to have a contract with those vendors in order to put it into our virtual school. Currently, the contract, the reason why, um, Cambridge and other courses are taught at the brick-and-mortar online is because we have a contract with that company. They may not be an approved provider for the virtual environment, which the state statute controls the virtual school. I can look into that specifically and make sure I get back to you, but the, the reality of it is, we have to diversify the portfolio of opportunities for our virtual students, not so much to beyond Florida Virtual, but we have to look at what we can also augment that with to keep kids who want to advance into different layers of courses or into different languages that aren't being offered by Florida Virtual. How can we then contract with the right vendors and make sure that we have a, a better menu of options, I guess is the way I would describe it, a better menu of options for the students who choose to enter the virtual world, either full-time or part-time?
Okay. Well, and I appreciate you saying that, but I, I know that Lee Virtual, Lee versus Florida, Florida Virtual actually has more than Lee Virtual. If we're using the Florida, they absolutely have more courses than we do.
Okay, they do. Um, but Lee Virtual does not access all of those courses at this time. So, they, we are contracted to use the Florida Virtual platform. We can use any course they have. We have to have certified teachers to teach it, and we have to have an approach to make sure those teachers have passed, um, as you, I'm sure you all know, in order for a teacher to have access to the Florida Virtual program. There's training and other things they have to go through in order to access that. So, while there are more courses, we don't necessarily have all the teachers, or we've not made the investment in our virtual program that we need to make in order to ensure that we have enough instructors to expand, uh, the curriculum offerings. But when I can, when you look at something towards Cambridge, Florida Virtual School does not have that in its online repertoire.
And just to clarify, the Cambridge courses at the high school level, the middle school students are not taking the high school Cambridge courses. And it is confusing, because Stage Nine is actually eighth grade, Stage Eight is actually seventh grade, so forth. So, um, there, the numbers, it may confuse people, because it says Stage Nine, but it's actually an eighth-grade middle school course.
That it, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Juvenelli?
So, this, piggybacking off of what Ms. Jordan just mentioned and questions, and this may be for the Superintendent. So, in a, in transitioning, if students were to, because sometimes I'm hearing students will do, uh, virtual school, and then they'll go back to brick-and-mortar. So, that, if we're not using the same curriculum, wouldn't that be difficult for them to transition? Because I mean, for whatever reason, they have to do Lee Virtual, or, or, or they choose to do a class. I'm, I know that I've had parents tell me that they, when they choose to do a virtual class, the kids are picking Florida Virtual over Lee Virtual, and I always thought it was because of the curriculum, and it, and it, or they liked the instructor, I'm not sure which. But I, and I was always trying to encourage Lee Virtual, because we get paid when we do Lee Virtual. And Florida Virtual, we don't get paid technically, so we actually pay. So, um, it costs us money. So, my concern is that how do we work together to, you know, because I feel like we're competing against brick-and-mortar a little bit, and some students do better in the virtual environment these days. I personally don't, but that's, that's, kids are choosing to do that over going to brick-and-mortar. So, um, I just am concerned over that, that we aren't, um, looking at our, our Lee Virtual school and, um, and supporting the, and supporting that whole program, because I think it's, I think it's the way of the future. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Director Houchen and Director Alavado. Thank you. Before we proceed on the Item B1, I'm going to ask for a brief, uh, five-minute approximate recess.
Whatever that statutory number is, that is what this policy sets as the superintendent's salary. And it also includes that discretionary bonus, if you will, with regards to performance. So those are the four policies that are brought forth before the board, and I just need direction from the board in terms of which one that you prefer.
Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. So for this section, I think probably the best way to handle it, because we obviously have a lot right here, is I'm going to go down the line and, as we try to at least pare this down, if you can answer to the policies, you know, which ones you, which one you want, and why not? So, I mean, you're not a final decision right now, but your thoughts on each of them, so we can try to pare this down and come to some kind of consensus. So if everyone's good with that, let's start here with Ms. Juvenelli.
Well, I was hoping to have a little more discussion versus me saying which one I want out of four of these right now. Can I just say my talking points, or would you rather just me? Because I really don't know.
Go ahead. And what I'm saying is, you know, so we can, I'm not asking to get to one right now, just seeing if there's one, something that stands out in one of them or the other, if there's ones we can try to at least get rid of at the moment, so we can try to pare this down.
Okay. So I've been thinking about this really a lot, and these are my notes. So, because I'd like to remind everybody that the governor has many employees that work underneath him that make a lot more money than a governor's salary. So I'm having a hard time understanding that total, complete rationale. No matter what, the elected superintendent will always receive a raise or an increase every year, just like we do. That, you know, that is all coming statutorily from Tallahassee. So I just don't want to forget that, that they will always get a raise. So my other concern is with an elected superintendent, they would have control over the salary with that 15% regarding, because they control the administrative raises. And they would have that ultimate power and control, that they can always increase their highest-paid employee, so that they would increase their salary as well. So they would have that control that concerns me, because we won't have that power. They will hold that power. So that incentivizes them to actually increase the compensation, as well as, you know, and that would be, not usually when you increase one administrator, you're going to increase more than one. So that could be a very, you know, expensive cost to the district. And then what happens to those, when all that's happening, what happens to those, to the staff that's the teacher, like Spalk and Talc employees? Then, because one of the, one of the options does, only discusses the salary for administrative salary pay schedule. It doesn't discuss, so therefore, it would, for me, I feel like it was, we're leaving our staff out of the equation. If we, one of my, one of my notes, let me see, because that was my concern, is, don't, let's not forget our employees that are in ground zero every day in the classroom and in the schools, and that are dealing with our students. I would be more inclined to stipulate that the superintendent would receive an additional increase over and above what is allowed by the law, and only that, only when a school board, at the school board's discretion, when all employees, to include Spalk and Talc and other, and the administrative salary schedule pay increase occurs. And my concern is, we have had administrative pay increase in the past, that this board didn't know about it until after the fact. So that could happen, because it has happened before, and then they tell us later, and it's done. It's already set in stone. So those are my concerns. So in our conversation today, I would be, like I said, I would be more in support of having that discretionary, to include our Spalk and Talc employees, not just the administrative salary pay increase. So I, that's not really one of the options, I don't think, but it was important to me that we cannot leave our Spalk and Talc employees behind in this decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. And yeah, that, that helps kind of narrow things down for you from that aspect, get your thoughts out. Real quick, Ms. Patrica, if you don't mind, may I ask a question to the attorney?
Yes, please.
So, and I had the same question. If I recall, administrative schedule salaries, the final decision-making authority is within this board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was confirmed. So go ahead, if you're ready, Ms. Patrica.
Yes, I agree that it is, the final decision-making lies with the board. However, this is the conversation that I have with Attorney DePree Bruno in our one-on-one. My concern about tying the superintendent's salary to his highest-paid employee, his or her highest-paid employee, if nothing else, perception is bad. Accusations are already out there, and we don't even have an elected superintendent yet. You don't want to provide, whether it's a, an actual or even a subconscious motivation to increase salaries based on what your own salary is going to be. So I don't like it being tied to the superintendent's salary at all, and I think, I'm sorry, to highest-paid employee's salary at all. And I believe that's almost verbatim the conversation that I have with Attorney DePree Bruno. I love number four, because it provides the board with maximum flexibility. Four is not something that any of us discussed at the table last time, but there is, there is no, there's nothing in there at all that prevents us from paying a Dr. Christopher Bernier what he's currently making, should he run for superintendent and win, nor is there anything keeping us from paying, if I were to run for superintendent and win, the lowest possible amount, because I am not qualified, right? Does that make sense? That's why I like number four the best. My question, if I may, through the chair to the attorney, is, I noticed in that last sentence, on almost all of these, it says, "At its sole discretion, the board may increase the superintendent's base salary by official board action, blah, blah, blah." At its sole discretion, the board may increase or decrease the superintendent's? Can we have that discretion as well? So for example, we, a superintendent wins, and on paper, that superintendent seems to have all the qualifications in the world, they come in, they implement all kinds of policies from the Dark Ages and drive the district into the ground, even though we gave them high pay based on their resume, so to speak. Two years later, where we've got more D schools than we've ever had, do we have, can we, if we put it in our policy, legally, can we have the discretion to decrease superintendent's salary?
So we certainly can't decrease it less than the statute, obviously, right?
Correct.
But the, this language, when we discussed this before, we were trying to make it not necessarily a raise, but more of a yearly bonus, instead of something that happens annually. So there would be some discretion to the board on a yearly basis to do another evaluation, to see if there's going to be another bonus, if you will, to the superintendent.
So increase or decrease could be added in there?
You can. The only thing is, if you're going to, I mean, what are you, the thought is that it's going to be yearly. So let's say that year one, you give 3%, because the data's good. Year two, you decide, no, I don't think the board's inclined to do that, because the data's not so good. So it's not really a decrease. It's going to be a decision as to whether or not you're going to provide an additional bonus, if you will.
Well, yeah, but it's not really a bonus, because adding to base salary means that 3% will be there in perpetuity.
Yes. Right. But, so, we can tweak the language to make it clearer, but when we have a discussion, that was the intent.
Okay, so the intent is just an annual increase to the base salary? That's not there the following year?
Correct.
Okay. I'm cool with that. And then I think there's a word missing in that last sentence on all of them, above the prescribed amount for any given fiscal year? Is that what it's supposed to be?
Yeah.
So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Jordan, if you're ready?
Ooh, yeah, there's a lot here. I think, I thought we did have this conversation regarding number four, and the thought process was that if we were to go with this, depending upon who were to be elected, that's when we would determine how much the people would be making, whether it's a, whoever that may be. Am I correct on that? Did we not have that conversation, Mr. DePree Bruno?
So number four really leaves it to the statute. So whatever that statutory income is, that's what the superintendent will earn. However, we did leave the discretionary language in there, if the data supports some type of bonus, if you will.
Okay. So, thank you. So then that would be, we know what the certain amount is, but then if we decided as a board to give them XYZ 200, whatever that money amount is, that would be at our discretion based on what we feel about the individual.
The individual's performance, yes.
No, prior, as, after the election.
Well, number four does not...
I'm sorry. Number four does not allow for that. Number four really is, the superintendent's salary will base, be based on whatever the legislature says for Lee County as a constitutional officer. So I believe now it's $189,000. That is what number four is. However, it also allows the board to have some discretion if the superintendent is performing well based on the data that comes in, and specifically with regards to student achievement, with regards to operational systems. And then I know there was board discussion in terms of communication with the board. That's what that is for, and that's a yearly bonus, if you will, if the board is satisfied with the job the superintendent is doing.
Okay. Thank you. So I am not for number four. And I, I still believe that, I'm still looking at number one as far as, because I know we spoke about this quite a bit, and regarding making sure that we have the best qualified individual for this position, I would be looking more at one for this.
Yeah, first, again, we do control the administrative salary range. Okay? They cannot go above that, no matter what superintendent wants to do, unless we agree. That's it. So we, we control that. I lean toward number one, just because the job is huge, and I don't want Ms. Patrica to be our, no, just kidding. So number four is definitely out for me. I'm leaning toward number one. Tying it to the state attorney, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. Why not tie it to the sheriff? Why not tie it to whatever? It's, I think we need to stay in our own area here and come up with something. That's just my personal opinion on that, money-wise. Where, I think we're looking at 15%. If everybody here thinks that's too high, or whatever, we could go maybe 10% or something like that, but I like the 15%. I want it to be high enough to attract our current people that work in the district, if they decide to run, where they're not taking a job cut in pay. And, you know, if we went with the, definitely number four, they'd be, definitely be taking a cut. So you would, why would anyone ever want to advance up to the superintendent from the school system that might be qualified? So I say get rid of number four. And is number three the one with the state's attorney?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see that one gone, so. And go from there. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Ms. Langford Fleming?
I agree with a lot of points Ms. Juvenelli had stated earlier. I think it's also important for us to remember, when we are making this decision right now, we are interviewing a superintendent. We don't know who it's going to be. It could be Dr. Bernier. It could be, it could be anyone. It could be somebody not from, I think it's important that we take who we think is going to win, or who we think is going to run, and we've got to remove that from our decision-making, because it really, it could be anybody at this point in time. So I think that will help us, if we can kind of mentally go there, if you will. I have to remind myself that this is an elected position. This is someone who is serving our public, and so it's important that we embrace that mindset, too. And yes, I mean, Lee County deserves the very best, so we do want to make it competitive, so that the right people, I guess, throw their name in the hat to run. But I, I mean, I guess if we're trying to weed some out, four and three aren't great, if that's what this discussion's about. But I think it's important that while we're talking about superintendent's salary, that we keep in mind, like Ms. Juvenelli stated, the Talc and the Spalc, and that might somewhere need to be placed inside the policy, along with our administrative schedule. A lot has already been said that I agree with, so I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. Ms. Morgan?
So my first choice is number one, because I do believe that, as has already been said, this is a job that requires experienced, professional, large-business, educator-experience-type people to run. And I think that, you know, asking anybody in this district to run for less than this is crazy. But I absolutely rule out number three. I'm not happy with number four. I would be willing to discuss number two. But I think we have to have a base salary. I really do believe that it's got to be set at, the reason I go for one and two is because I believe that it has to be higher than the highest-paid employee in the district. I just don't believe you can put out there that it's going to be potentially significantly less than the highest-paid employee, and significantly less than the current superintendent contract. So I throw out three and four. One is my first choice. I'll discuss number two.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Okay. Couple things before I guess we go back through this, and I may need some help from you, Mr. DePree Bruno, on this. So me personally, I've had a lot of time to think about this and really think about this role, and I'm going to kind of reiterate some of the things I said last time. For me, the one tying it to the state attorney in, looking at now, that's out for me. I think we have a pretty broad consensus, at least, or discussion, that that one's out for all of us, it looks like. I don't see anyone that really wants to keep that one. So I keep looking at it, that, again, as I said last time, this is public service and a public servant, the same as us. And we cannot make this about the person. So really, what I'm looking at is, I am, I'm favoring right now, if I were to go ahead, would be option four, which would be the, set by the state legislature. As Ms. Patrica mentioned, that does not, you know, forego any of us per statute, you know, going through and, you know, raising it by, I believe it's majority vote, on that point. If I were to go for a number two, it would be, or a second one out of that, it would be, let me just make sure I'm getting my numbers right on this one, so, number two. So, but right now, I'm preferring by statute. It's just, as I said, looking at it, and the question I have to ask myself, and, you know, I've asked, is, by paying more money, are we going to get a better elected official? So does that stand for any elected officials in this area? It, it's tough, because we know how much that superintendent, we know how much this one, how much work he puts into this position. But again, you know, the voters chose that it would be elected, and, you know, I'm of the understanding that, you know, they weren't looking at us to have a dramatic salary change on that. So, so I don't know if we want to go back through on this. Again, we're, as I said, I think the state attorney one is out on this. I don't know if we maybe want to go back down and see if any of the others are out. Maybe do this way, or go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
I have a question, if I may. Is there a way to change the language of number four to not be in line with the fiscal year, but instead to be in November? That way the superintendent doesn't have to serve a day without the board having the discretionary ability to increase or decrease based on qualifications?
I would just ask, I mean, we can set it at any point as a board by majority vote, so I get that. I mean, we could add other language in. I mean, we could go to a, you know, I had talked about having a yearly discussion on it, so, but, you know, I think we need to get to the main part of the topic. Mr. Persons, go ahead.
I don't know of any elected office where a board says your salary's this or that once they're elected. You know, it's not us to say if they're doing a good job or not. It's the public. They're the ones that elected. When they were electing a superintendent, from all my talks, is they thought they could pick a better person than the school board had done in the past. I never heard salary mentioned. No one knew what the constitutional salary was or cared about it, you know? I think we should just, I don't, actually, I don't like the 15%. I think we should set a salary high enough for four years and go there. You know, the, our control is the 3% of whether they do a good job or not. And the 3% is, you know, sizable amount of money, when you get up into something along those lines. You know, something like maybe, I mean, I think a salary of like $230,000, $235,000, to me, would be enticing enough for any of our administrators, top administrators, to think about running, and possibly our superintendent to run also. But I just don't think, I can't imagine us getting elected and asking the public if we're doing a good job, what should our salary be? You know, you're gonna, because the board changes all the time, and you could have a very good superintendent, and you, all of a sudden, you get a different leading board, and they, they don't think he's doing a good job. So it's, I don't know, I just, this whole thing of, we're going to see how good a job they do, it'd make a huge difference in their salary. And as far as, like, the governor making less than everybody else, I mean, he does get a free house. He gets free, free everything, you know? It's a pretty good deal. But again, this job is closest to a city manager, a county manager, and other appointed superintendents. You know, if y'all were going to appoint a superintendent, if we were going to appoint a superintendent, I don't think we would say, okay, we'll give you a contract of $189,000, and then we'll decide if you're doing a good job, decide what else we're going to pay you. You'd never get anybody interested. So I, I think we need to come up with a set salary. And then if we had a set salary, then we would not have to worry about a superintendent bumping up somebody or bumping them down. I just think we need to set it high enough to be fair.
Real, real quick, Ms. Morgan, do you mind if I jump in? In regards to that, I think we also need to make sure, we can always set the policy for something, then we can have a separate action for setting that salary, too, just to lay that out there. Ms. Morgan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we ought to have this conversation in the context of the briefing we had this afternoon. The whole reason we have been, we have not been a successful school district in terms of raising student achievement is because of leadership turnover. Now, you get, you get someone who's willing to run for election for $178,000. I guarantee you, key leadership in this district will leave, because that person will have no clue what they are doing as an educational leader. The people who are in key leadership positions can walk away to any other school district in the, in the state and make a salary. I do not believe that the voters voted on salary. I believe the voters voted believing, as someone said, that the superintendent, they felt they could do a better job electing someone who would do better by kids than what has been done. And by lowering our standards, we are not going to be able to meet the public's expectation to raise student achievement. So I absolutely am against setting it based strictly on the statute. I absolutely believe that we will not get high-quality candidates if we set, if we set it anywhere below the highest-paid employee in the school district. I mean, this is not a political decision. This is an educational decision. What's best, you know, we're making a decision about what's best for kids, and the public elected us to make decisions about what's best for kids. I do not believe they elected a superintendent to be paid $178,000. I just, to me, it's so irrational, I can't, I can't go any further. Thank you.
Real quick, so I think we're in agreement that at least number three, the state attorney, is off the board. With Mr. Persons saying he was not, unless I'm misinterpreting, was not going forward the 15%.
I just think, I would either for number one or for setting a set salary, that at this point would be very close to that 15%, but not maybe tying it to a 15%. Does that make sense to everyone?
Uh huh.
To say, this is going to be the salary, and go from there, and then...
Because again, I'm looking at it as, as twofold, the policy we can set, you know, for example, for me, as I said, I would be looking at number four, but not, that doesn't mean, again, by majority vote or whatever, that we couldn't go forward and say, this is a salary. So why don't I go back down the line and see if there's one that really points out to all of you going down? We're just trying to whittle this down. So it sounds like to me that the 15% may be out, but I could be wrong by that. So let's, let's go back down with Ms. Juvenelli, please.
So I am number four as well. I could maybe be persuaded to number two. I am, number one is out, and number three was out for me. So I, but I don't, again, I want to reiterate that I, not just administrative salary, I want, because I've seen it where they get, this, this elected official's going to get an increase every year, regardless of how well they perform. So I am concerned regarding Spalk and Talc. I want them, I want that considered in the, in our conversation, and then you might win me over with number two. But that's really important, is making sure that, because there could be a year when no one gets raises, because I've seen that happen, and then, yet, the superintendent's going to get a raise. So no matter what, there's going to be an increase.
How?
How? Because the law, the statutory, every year, they get, every, automatic, you get an increase. We've gotten an increase, and actually, when we weren't paying our teachers enough, they decreased it, and we had to pay it back, because we were overpaid. So I do believe that there's a fact, that there's a factor that could happen, where the superintendent's salary can be increased, and then if there's a freeze and there's no pay increase throughout the district, that shouldn't happen, there should, nothing else should be happening to the superintendent's salary. I think it, everybody needs to feel the pain together, not, not one individual exceeding and excelling financially. And that's happened, whether we like it or not. It's happened. And we also have had administrators paid, and this board did not know about it until well after the fact. Salaries rolled, and they were retroed, so, quite a bit. So I'm going to be, I'm going to err on the side of caution. I'm, that's why I'm leaning that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. Before we proceed, Attorney DePree Bruno, did you have a question? And Ms. Juvenelli, I guess you said two or four?
Yes.
Okay.
Four, then.
Correct. For four, four and two is, okay.
Two. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I just want to make sure that, can you put number four back up there, please? That the board sees exactly what four says. Four is really limiting the salary, the actual salary, to the statute with the discretionary bonus, if you will. That's what four says. So I just want to make sure the board is clear with that. And then, Ms. Chairman, if you could, we're not voting, I'm not asking for a consensus or anything like that.
I'm writing it down right now.
I just want to just really understand where the board is. So if I could just see from the board, how many do not, do not want to move forward with number three?
Okay. Number three would be the state attorney one. Raise your hands if you don't want to move forward with that.
I was not not voting.
It's not voting. It's for me to under...
It is.
No, it's not a vote. We're not voting. I just need to know exactly where the board is, so I can see which, which policies for us to move forward with, just to have an idea, almost like a consensus, if you will, but it's not a vote, because you only take votes during an action meeting. The next one that I really want to understand is, where is the board on number four? How many want to proceed with further discussion on number four?
Let's just give a thumbs up, or what do, what do we, in regards...
I already said what I want. I already said so.
You said two and four. Or then, based on my notes, then, I just want, let me, if I may, based on my notes, I can just kind of state what my notes reflect. So I had Ms. Juvenelli for two or four. I had Ms. Patrica for number four. I had Ms. Jordan for number one, and not for number four. I had Mr. Persons for number one, and I think he also has another option in terms of putting the salary in there, or number two, not for number four, number three. I had Ms. Langford Fleming accepting some of the language with regards to Talc and Spalc that Ms. Juvenelli brought up. that Ms. Juvenelli brought up, and not for number four and three. And then I had Ms. Morgan stating that she preferred number one, and was not for number three and four, but was willing to discuss number two. And then I had Mr. Fisher for number four, and again, number three is out, and willing to discuss number two. Is that a proper reflection of where the board is?
I believe so. And on number four, maybe we can look at it, again, essentially follow, you know, whatever the statute is, it does give us the ability, if we do want to raise that, as long as, you know, in, you know, following the statute. So, I mean, just give us kind of that, the same flexibility as statute. Mr. Persons?
I just want to say for the public, all four of these will result in the school district paying the superintendent less than he's currently being paid. Okay, just so the public knows that none of these are to bump what we're currently paying out for a superintendent. Number one would be close, but still quite a bit less.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So I still like number four a lot, with some adjustments in there in terms of when the decision is made to increase the base salary. I will say that, and I don't know how to say this without sounding critical, Ms. Morgan, so please don't take it that way, but I can't get inside the head of voters and determine what they were thinking about when they voted, and to assume that they didn't know what the salary was is not an assumption that I can make. The circles in which I travel, the decrease in salary was a huge topic. It was something that, that people were very, very concerned about, and I know that it was part of what was advertised or discussed on social media, and in letters to the editor, and in other mediums of communication. So I can't dismiss the voters' intent. They voted for an elected superintendent, which comes with a constitutional formula, or a formula for constitutional officers to be paid. I am, said this before, I'm loath to reject that. All of that being said, I could potentially entertain number two.
Ms. Jordan, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm looking at this, this list of what others are making throughout the state of Florida, so I don't think that we're asking or, or speaking regarding the numbers are not wrong. I don't believe that, and I do not believe that the, when that was put on the ballot, that it had anything to do with the cost for what we were paying. And I have to agree with Ms. Morgan on that. I do believe that people, a lot of people misunderstood what the heck that was, that when it was on the ballot. And I know that just from speaking to people, and not realizing that they had just voted the way that they voted. I still cannot do, absolutely will not do number four, and I think we already took off three, for sure. Possibly two, with a, like Chair Pearson said, Person said, regarding a certain amount, I would be okay with that. But I have the numbers of what the other superintendents are making. So I still stand with those two.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Morgan?
So our failure to educate the public about the responsibilities and role of the superintendent, and what is entitled, what other superintendents make across the state, that's our failure. Our failure to justify the decisions we're making about compensation are on us. We know what we are paying the superintendent is what that superintendent should be making, and is in fact lower than probably justifiable when you look at salaries statewide. In my circle, people are amazed, given what the head of Lee Health makes, people are amazed at how little a superintendent makes. With the same kind of budget, the same kind of staff, now, I recognize that that person's not elected, but the fact of the matter is, if you're, if you're in the managerial class, administrative class, you're looking at this position, and you're saying, this position is entitled to a certain level of compensation. And, and I think it's a mistake to presume that most people think that we should be paying minimum wage to a superintendent. So I still am on, number one is my first choice, and I will discuss number two.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Before I go to my thoughts next, Ms. Langford Fleming, do you have anything else in addition you'd like to add? Okay, for me, and listening to the board, I'm looking at it, I'm still on number four. I would like to see some changes to, you know, mirror the statute a little bit better, to give us that flexibility. Again, I think we could always have a separate discussion, we wanted on salary. I'd like to see, as I said, something perhaps having a yearly discussion on it from the board. And again, you know, just because we give guidance on a policy just today does not mean we're making a final decision today, I want to remind everyone. So it seems like we're coming to two and four. Do we want to miss?
What happened to one? There's three people here, sitting here.
Did I miss, does one still a possibility, then? I wasn't sure with Mr. Persons. Okay, then we're-
That's still our first choice.
Okay, then I misunderstood that, Ms. Morgan, my apologies.
And that's why-
Oops. My apologies, my mic was off for that, sorry. Why don't we go down again and give what you would be your preference of a number right now, and then if there's any further discussion on that, go ahead, Ms. Juvenelli.
I'm still number four, and number two, I would entertain a conversation there.
Ms. Patrica?
Four.
Ms. Jordan?
One or two. Please.
Mr. Persons?
Yeah, one, first choice, two, if we can set a salary.
Okay. Ms. Langford Fleming?
Um, two.
Okay. And then, Ms. Morgan?
One and two.
Okay.
One preferable.
Okay, and I would be number four, but I could also do two. Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
So it sounds like compromise isn't gonna be necessary here with eliminating one and four and talking about two. That's, is that a?
I think that's what we got already.
Yeah. I'm thinking that's the direction we're probably gonna need to take on that, so. Let's see, one. Thoughts on going with compromise to number two, which sets it so that it is, the, the salary is set that it will not be lower than the highest-paid employee within the school district? Can I get some feedback on that? Ms. Patrica?
So if we look at, going back how many weeks now, that we were sent policies from other districts, this is very typical for elected superintendents across the state. I like the fact that there is no proscribed amount of 15% in addition to the highest-paid employee, because again, the board has discretion. Maintaining discretion for the board is what requires the superintendent to focus on things like communication and having a good relationship with the board. So I'm uncomfortable with a $230,000 number, for example, because that, there is no basis for that whatsoever. Here, there is a basis, and then the, the discretion is left up to the board to increase that. I'd like to talk about timing, making sure this occurs in November, so the board can decide right away in November what the pay is gonna be for that year. And then, what was the, there was one last item that you can come back to me for, because I don't want to waste our time.
Ms. Juvenelli?
So I agree with Ms. Patrica. Oh my gosh, you just said something, and then you, I lost it. So I like November, that's what I want to support. Because November, we get the, we'll know what the increase was automatically by law. So in November, then we can decide if there's an additional increase at that time. So I like the timing of that. Also, that would be also the same timing, so maybe it has to be the end of November, because that is obviously the election as well, would have happened. So I don't see us doing something prematurely. So I would agree with that. So thank you.
I think Mr. Persons was next, followed by Ms. Morgan.
I just don't see, so you're saying they get elected at $189,000, and then we decide how much to pay them? More? I just, I can't go with that, I'm sorry. I, we've got a set of salary. I just don't see any way that we're gonna get good quality, or just leave it $189,000. You know what I mean? You're just gonna get, like Ms. Morgan said, we're gonna lose leadership.
What about number two, Mr. Persons?
Well, that's what number two pretty much is. Oh, okay, it'd be 200, it'd be $1 more than the highest-paid employee, you're still not gonna get anyone to take on that responsibility without a guarantee of some kind of salary. I mean, what if Mr. Ramirez decided to run and got elected, and I said, after he got elected, we said we're gonna pay him one more dollar? He goes, I thought I'd get more than that. I mean, that's what I would think. So it's just too iffy for a board. We need to make a firm decision somewhere. And again, other districts have come up with a percentage, that was number one, or they can come up with a salary, I just, I don't know, I just, I just think we're making a big mistake, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I can't add anything at this point. I'm with Chair Persons.
For me, I would compromise, as I said, to go to number two. Why don't I ask if there's an objection going down the line to anyone, if they have an objection to moving forward at this moment with number two as guidance? Number two, if you could restate that, Attorney DePree Bruno, please.
So it's on the screen, and number two is removing the percentages for both the discretionary additional compensation, as well as the additional compensation based on the administrative salary schedule. So that leaves it very wide and open in terms of what the board can do with regards to any additional compensation.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
With the addition of a November timeframe, number one, number two, I like the addition of the Talc and Spalk in there as well. I understand that the superintendent is, should be going with the administrative salary schedule, however, in an elected position, it's different, and I feel like it's important to make sure that those units are being served as well. So I like the addition of Talc and Spalk, and I'll go back to what Mrs. Langford Fleming and Mr. Fisher have said repeatedly, which is, this is a public service position. This is not, I'm taking the job so I can make a lot of money. This is a public service position. That's what elected officials are. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. So why don't we look at it like this? I don't know if it'd be appropriate this way, Attorney DePree Bruno, but maybe if we get, you know, the basics, like we talked about, at least getting to a number to move forward with, and then maybe some of the particulars we could discuss in our one-on-ones with you? I don't know if the board would be, I know we're running on time here, too, so. Again, it's not the final discussion for this.
So what I'm hearing from the board is consideration of number two out of the four policies, and there's been some discussion in terms of the timing of any increase, and I believe the suggestion that it be in November. And then to add some type of language with regards to Talc and Spalk, I'm not sure exactly how we want to frame that, but that's something that we can discuss, and yes, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I know we keep saying Talc and Spalk, and of course, we always want to take care of Talc and Spalk and all of our employees, but, and we know that when we are working, we're always working, the administration is always after Talc and Spalk. So we're making sure that we're taking care of them first. So I don't know where that lies in here, and then with the, yes, it is a, they're serving the public, however, it is a $2 billion business. This is a corporation, it is a business, and we have to make sure that we have the right people in that. And I believe that this right here, we still have to do our due diligence in making sure that we are doing what we need to do, as well as when they, when the public comes out and they do the election of this person. We all received that report from the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, which has all the elected officials and all their, what their salaries are and everything, so all, I believe it came out to everybody. And so I'm looking at that, so I definitely am with Chair Persons as far as, we need to make sure that, I believe that we need to have a salary set before we go, and not wait till they get elected and decide whether we like this person or not, and raise them up at that point.
Attorney DePree Bruno?
I have a suggestion for the board with regards to language relating to Talc and Spalk. If you look on the second paragraph of the proposed policy, it does say that the superintendent is entitled to increases or bonuses that other employees on the administrative salary schedule receives from time to time. A lot of those additional bonuses or increase are already tied into Talc and Spalk. So if I add language that says, from time to time, and do consideration of Talc and Spalk, would that be sufficient to address that concern?
For me, Ms. DePree Bruno, I think we need to look at this as just get the general framework right now, and then get into those details later on. At this point, again, this is not final, and maybe we can each, as I said, express in a one-on-one or our next briefing that point. I just want to make sure that we get the basis for at least one of them going forward today. I know we're running on time, too. I don't want to shorten this, but I want to look at it, and feel free, obviously, to comment, but is there any objection from, you know, looking into option number two from my fellow board members at the moment?
No objection.
Okay, one. Anybody else?
What was the question?
Is there an objection to at least trying to use number two going forward as our framework at the moment? Meaning that it would be higher-
$1 more than the highest-
Yeah, or whatever the equivalent.
I object.
So we got two. Three. Any others? Do you have your guidance, Attorney DePree Bruno?
Yes, I do. And, Mr. Chairman, what I'm gonna do for this particular policy is pre-brief it again on October 3rd.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I know it's a, it's a very tough discussion, I do appreciate everyone, their thoughts, so I thought it was, you know, some very good points, so. Let's move forward to the rest of this policy discussion. Thank you.
If we wait long enough, maybe the election will have occurred.
Just let me know when you're ready to proceed. Are we ready to proceed with the rest of the policy discussion? Attorney DePree Bruno?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the board, I mean, we did have an opportunity to discuss and review policies in one-on-ones, and I know that if anyone has anything that they want to suggest, to make changes, please feel free to do so.
Okay. Any board members, comments, questions, suggestions? Ms. Patrica?
I've got two, if I may. The first is 1121.01, and this is for the superintendent through the chair, if I may. The third paragraph, cost of background screening is to be borne by the candidate for employment. That has come up at the microphone a couple of times in the past several meetings. That has come up at the microphone a couple of times in the past several meetings. You don't have to answer this now. If you could let us know if that is a typical practice for districts across the state, I'd appreciate it.
I can let you know at this point, it is a very typical practice for, across, not only the state, but across the nation, for employees seeking employment for, and that's really related to fingerprinting, to be candid. It doesn't say fingerprinting, but in order to do a criminal background check on somebody, that's what you have to get, you have to get their fingerprints, and then move forward from there.
I think the only time I had that cost covered was when it was for a volunteer position. Otherwise, I always had to rattle costs myself. Anyways, that's my first question. Second one is for 7421, and this is for the board attorney, if I may, through the chair. Have to find the language. Let me do a search. Okay, so let's look at "Restrooms and Changing Facilities" as the subject matter. "For restrooms, the district maintains a number of restrooms designated for exclusive use by females and males." Should that be an "or"? How can you have exclusive use with an "and"?
We can change that to "or."
And it appears several times throughout the policy. Please. I just didn't know if the "and" was intentional, because to me, the "and" makes it counterintuitive, because you can't be exclusive if you have males and females, but exclusive for males or females is more in line with what we're looking to accomplish. Those are my comments, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I'm so sorry, because I wrote something down, and I could not find it, but it was pertaining to this one as well. With the, the, the restrooms, for the restrooms and the changing facilities, where are these? And do, and do all of our, the access to these restrooms and changing facilities, do we have one in each of the schools and in all of our facilities? That's my question. But we have a policy, so we should have these if we have a policy.
Mr. Chair, I can, what I believe this policy is referring to, in fact, I'm sure of it, is they are stopping short of saying things like locker rooms, because not all school buildings have a locker room, i.e. in elementary. But there are areas where they are changing facilities. In contained within that room is not a commode or a urinal. So they are literally there for changing facilities. When you even think of elementary school in terms of drama, sometimes there's a specific room set aside for cast to do costume changes, et cetera. So this just simply illuminates the fact that we need to do proper signage and then enforce the policy that you're creating. So I would expand, as you get into the procedures of doing this, changing facilities would begin to include lots of different places. I know that people can change in a restroom if they so choose, and sometimes that's done. Or in the single stall that we provide for, in some of our facilities, for a single stall, which could also be called a family changing area or a family restroom. So there's a lot of different types, depending on when schools were built. This provides us the direction to make sure that we understand exactly what the board's expectation is related to those types of facilities, and that our procedures will be aligned accordingly.
If I may, and I guess I'm asking this only because of the fact that I've had someone contact me and asked me the same question, as a person who works in our district, which they know which bathroom they have to go to, but they don't want other people to feel uncomfortable if they're in those bathrooms. But if we don't have a neutral, a bathroom that is neutral for whomever, just like here in the district, we understand there is no place here if they're here training, because of our, all of our bathrooms are as such, they don't have the facilities like we have in the back in our offices. So we don't have a single-stall bathrooms in all of our facilities, as well as our districts unless, I guess, they would go to the nurse's office or a centralized location. So I just want to make sure that if we are putting this out, that we are actually doing what, we're accommodating everybody. That's the only thing I have to say.
Okay. Any other board member comments or questions? Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes, actually, on the same one. What, it says, "The district also offers unisex changing facilities at its schools." So I am curious, like, what is that, is that single-stall, like you said, the family bathrooms are... I know, like, a school I was at, what was it? Success Academy, in their library or their media room, they have, their bathrooms say "boys/girls," and their one room, they lock in separate. Do we have that at all schools or just at selected schools because of the, you know, the age of the school? Thank you. That's the question. Do we have a...
I can't speak to all, because all is extremely inclusive. I can say that most of our school buildings have restrooms that could be occupied because of their singular nature by individuals of a different sex at different times. So, in other words, there are areas even within this building, to go back to Mrs. Jordan's original comment, we've even begun with some of our training to be able to identify specific restrooms that do exist in this building that are not necessarily known, as you would pass through the main corridor. But there are nearby restrooms that are unisex. Right now, in our building, they're designated as male and female. What our attorney has shared with me, and we've shared with our facilities department, that we must label them boy/girl, because they're a single stall. So, in other words, it's like walking into a public restroom area. If we know that it's a single stall in a particular gas station, for instance, you know, a man can use it, lock the door, take care of what he needs to take care of, and then the door reopens, and a female could go in next, in the case of a singular unisex stall. But to Ms. Juvenelli's question, I cannot, with full confidence, say that all of our school buildings do. I know that we've asked for, about two and a half weeks ago, this was raised by Attorney DePree Bruno regarding signage, so we are currently using all of our fish reports and making sure we've identified every restroom, and I can get that answer for you prudently.
Dr. Benier, is that something that we can strive for, having that opportunity at every school? Because I think that, in this day and age, I think we need to strive for that, and I don't know what that cost might be. And maybe that's something we need to know what that is, but I think it's probably something that we need to address sooner than later. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli, I'm pleased to tell you that there have been ongoing conversations since I arrived about new design, and new design of our school buildings, not just for restroom facilities of unisex or singular, but also redesigning how students go to the restroom and what those facilities look like, as well as how we deal with locker rooms, specifically at the secondary level. So you will see in some of our plans coming forward, as we build new buildings, some changes as it relates to that, to keep pace with the way things are changing.
Thank you.
Anything else, fellow board members? Okay. Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. We're going to move on to item C. Oh, sorry, Attorney DePree Bruno. My apologies. Go ahead.
So one of the other only times that we use consensus, I just want to make sure, with the exception of the discretionary salary schedule, that these policies can now move forward to official rulemaking and first reading.
Anyone have any disagreement?
No.
Okay. The superintendent part, so. I believe you have your guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. Next up will be...
Fisher. Fisher.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to make sure that one was pulled off, that right? Mental health was pulled out of this?
Yes, that will come again for a pre-brief on October 3rd. So there'll be two of them, the one that was pulled, as well as the elected superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, that was my third false start for the day, so. Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. Next up would be public comment, item C1. I don't know if you're going to be addressing it from over there, Attorney DePree Bruno, or...
So I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, that there is no one signed up at this time for... Oh, I'm sorry, there is one person signed up. We have one individual signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that has not signed up for public comment that would like to make a comment? Okay. Attorney DePree Bruno?
So I don't have my script with me, but I'll do the best that I can, that during this particular portion of the meeting, which is the briefing, you are allowed to make a public comment on the actual items that are on this agenda. And we have one person that is speaking, so that will be three minutes, and of course, you know the decorum in the chambers, Ms. Divageli. So our first speaker and only speaker is Ms. Kristy Divageli.
My God, there we go.
It's her timer as well, for her three minutes.
Good afternoon, board. So I just have a couple of things that I had noticed when I was reviewing these policies. The first one, in regards to restrooms and changing facilities, it states, "Violations of this policy for students," it says, "subject to discipline in accordance with the student code of conduct." My question is, where in the student code of conduct is this mentioned, and what is the discipline for violating, for violating this policy in regards to students? The next one would be in regards to the teacher's bill of rights. My first question is, like, I understand that this is, this was introduced in legislation, like, from a statewide level, but I'm curious to know whose idea this was, or to introduce this policy to our district, and why we felt the need to reiterate already existing law. But then I also saw, I noticed in, what I believe is a scribner's error, and it's in D, number one, I believe it should read, "in accordance with the general law and state board rules," although right now, it says "state board of rules." So that's just a tiny little fix. And then, under citizens advisory committees, under committees, section A, it says, "All committee meetings shall be video," and then it's crossed out, and it says, "audio taped." I would implore you to please change this back to videotaped. It's so hard to keep track when you're watching these meetings on YouTube. It's extremely difficult to keep track when they're, when you're just, when they have a presentation going on, and they don't, they don't switch it back to the different speakers. Now, I know you guys, so I know your voices, but when a staff member's up here or somebody else, like, no, I don't know all the people in the committees. When you guys switch to audio recordings, no one's going to have any clue who's talking about anything, anytime at all. So I would ask you to please revisit that. And then the last thing that I have to say is about your conversation about the superintendent's salary. And with my last minute and a half, or minute and 18 seconds, I just want to say that it's really funny to me, it's probably not funny to any of you, but I rather enjoyed this exchange between all of you today. Every one of you made extremely valid points, and at the end of the day, all of you are responsible in one way or another for where we are now with an elected superintendent looming over our heads. Hindsight really is 2020, and it is just such a shame that, come this time next year, we will have the title of largest school district in the nation with an elected superintendent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda is good of the order and board comment. I will start with Ms. Morgan, if that's okay today.
So I have one comment and several asks. Back on August 22nd, I, in my comments, suggested that the board attorney prepare for the board a process with respect to millage, so that we would have an understanding of what was required for us to move forward. I have seen nothing. I assume that's because we didn't get the board to agree to direct her to do that. I am asking the board to direct the board attorney to put together a document with respect to the process for, and timing for a resolution regarding millage, also a draft resolution to accompany that, based on what's been done other places in the state. I would also, with a time certain, let's say 30 days, to do that. And then, same thing for the administration, that the administration pull together data with respect to the impact of a half-mill increase. So, again, 30 days. That's my first ask. My second ask is with respect to the construction planning process. And I brought it up, this is the third time I'm going to bring it up. We've basically seen an increase in the cost of one school equivalent to the cost of a middle school. So I am asking that the board either direct the administration to contact the clerk of courts to ask for a forensic audit of our planning process with respect to this particular transaction, and to come back with a draft policy recommendation for the board, or for the board to direct RSM to take on an additional task at a specified price with the same thing, to do an audit of that particular process, and to come back to the board with a recommended policy. My comments, my one comment has to do with a conversation this afternoon. It has been said that, you know, there's an opportunity for failure with respect to the district's strategic plan and the conversation we heard with regard to academic services goals. The fact of the matter is, the reason all of the other goals have failed is because we've had leadership turnover. Any transformational change requires a minimum of three years to see fully the impact. The three years is when you pick up the laggards. The first year are the change agents, the people who are willing to engage in transformational change, willing to take on the responsibility and the risk. And then the second year, you have the people who see how successful it has been in the first year with that leadership. And then you have the naysayers, who say, "I'm willing to set it out three years because I know the superintendent's going to go, or key leadership's going to go." So you have to get past that three-year point. All I'm saying is that, if we're going to have transformational change in this district, if we are going to move the needle, this board has to acknowledge its responsibility for ensuring that the leadership who has made effectively this promise to you is here to see it through. And if they're not, it's not their problem, it's our problem. And we will have failed the kids, not the leadership. It sounds like a lecture. To a certain extent, it is, because I am so gratified to see the level of leadership that we have brought into this district. I am so gratified to see the opportunities the staff in our district are going to have working with these professional educators. We have a real opportunity to step into the real world as a large school district in our laps. It's here, but it's on us to make sure that it happens, not on the people who presented the plan, and not on the people in the classrooms. It's, they will get, they will be able to do the job if we create the conditions in which they can be successful. We create those conditions by controlling leadership in this district. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan, are you asking for...
I am.
...your two items? Can we, first one would be, you're requesting further information into potential additional millage, is that what you're requesting?
Yes, two requests. One from legal, one from the administration.
Okay. So this would be just, would this be a presentation you're asking for, or...
Can be a briefing, whatever. It's, it can be a workshop. I don't care. I just think within 30 days, it would be great if the board had information about millage, so that we could have that conversation.
Okay. So I'm going to ask my fellow board members if there's interest in that. Go ahead.
I thought we talked about this at our last meeting, where we all agreed that the superintendent would be bringing forward, or we would be having a discussion about it as a board. I assumed that that information would come from the administration and from the attorney at that time, because we did all agree to that.
Yeah, and that's fine. And I'm saying 30 days, because when we spoke about it in August, nothing happened. And I'm saying, there has to be a time certain at which we're having this conversation, and the responsibilities, that's it.
Okay. Anyone on the board, then? Ms. Morgan, Ms. Patrika, is there anyone else that wants to move forward with that discussion? Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persons. Anyone else? I'm going to object to that on the record, so, but we have the...
Mr. Fisher, can I say something? Yeah. I just would like to, I think we should go ahead and look at it. At this time, I'm really not for increasing the millage, I'll go on record saying that. But I'm not going to deny the board members a chance to see exactly what it would entice. So that's why I'm saying go ahead with it. So that's why I'm saying go ahead with it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I need information before I can know whether I would reject it or accept it specifically. The districts that have additional millage, are their teacher shortages not as bad as districts that don't have additional millage? You know, like data, I need data before I can form any kind of a conclusion at all.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, so we're directing legal and the superintendent in this case, is what your wish is? Okay, and then, Ms. Juvenelli, did you have her?
So I'm not opposed to hearing the information. I lean back towards, before I could ever make a decision, that I actually support Ms. Morgan's forensic audit. I think that to the transparency piece of it and getting the trust back in the community, this would be a start. And I think that I could get behind a millage with the forensic audit on construction as well as the maintenance. It's what's going on, you know, just to make sure that we're doing things. I feel like there's ways that we could cut costs and find in favor money, just to even pay teachers more. So I think that we would need to start there first before we could actually go for the millage. But I think the conversation needs to happen. Thank you.
Okay, real quick, so I was going to ask if Attorney DePree Bruno and Mr. Superintendent had guidance for at least the first topic.
With regard to the first topic, August 22nd, I believe that's the day that I was out. So I apologize if there was a direction to the board attorney that I did not receive. And I'll go back and look at the tape as well. With regards to what you're asking for, Ms. Morgan, I believe what you're asking is just the process. If the board was to do a resolution for an additional millage, there's at least two types that I'm familiar with from the statute. So we can definitely provide you with that, in addition to how long it will take and the calendar, more or less. Okay, all right. And then regarding the second topic, this is something that I know that legal was also looking into in terms of perhaps creating a policy to address certain things, in terms of step by step, when the board should be made aware of certain things that are happening in the construction process. I want a little bit more clarity if I can. You're asking for an audit on a specific project?
Yeah, the one I've been talking about, the Riverdale High School. How did we get from 41 million to 111 million, from 70 million to 111 million in, what, six weeks? Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted some clarity. Thank you.
Board members, do we have any objection to that? Item number two, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Patrica?
I just, I'm not sure. I'm not sure a forensic audit is appropriate. A forensic audit is to uncover embezzlement, fraud, criminal behavior.
I shouldn't have used that word.
Thank you.
No, it's an audit.
Yeah, I'm very interested to know how we got there. And I don't know if that requires RSM, or if it requires the superintendent to bring his staff in front of us, explain how it got there, and then the board decides whether RSM needs to dig in.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. I was going to mention the same thing in terms of art for the forensic part. I'm not against having any kind of audit for that, I just want to make sure. I think I may have cut off Ms. Jordan's.
No, you're fine. I was just going to say, if we did get the information first and looked at that before going to, we have an audit committee, so that way we could present it to them as well, and then turn it over to RSM, if need be.
Was there another hand I missed down there? Are we?
Oh. No, I was at that first.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Persons?
Yeah, I tried to look into that project a little bit, and just the scope of it changed and kept getting approved. It's, I don't know if there's anything fraudulent, but I think the ones were coming before us now are going to be a price certain, and that's it. You know, but when they get into remodeling, that's where it seems we have the biggest problem, not a new school.
No, I agree.
And there are things that come up in remodeling, it's just more expensive to do. But we probably should look at it a lot closer, that's a huge, and I agree. And it was a little bit, part of that was before I was on the board. But it was alarming when I heard it. So yes, please, we could just look into it a little more, explain how we got there. And the biggest thing is, and probably everything that was there needed to be done, but it should have probably been upfront. I think that's probably the biggest problem.
Ms. Morgan, then Dr. Bernier, I know wants to.
Yeah, I mean, remodeling is a huge problem. And if you don't have the right people asking the right questions at the beginning, you get caught. And that's what this is about, this is about, you know. And as Attorney DePree Bruno said, keeping the board in the loop.
Okay, Dr. Bernier?
Just a couple of clarifications with the millage. I've already instructed staff to begin the digging into the other districts that have half mills. It was very specific that you also wanted to know as best as we could get when there are half mills, specifically what the language was in their ballot for what it would be for. Because in some cases, half millage does not go to salaries. It goes to protect certain types of positions, the numbers of. Specifically, in a district to the north, they have a millage specifically to, in a sense, save the arts, band music, drama, and the promise to the community was with the half millage, we would hold on to those. You'll find that not a lot of them, in our early research, are actually putting it into salary. The problem with salary, as you all know, salary has to continue over a period of time. So while you have a millage, you can increase salaries. But if the millage ever were to go away, you would then have to absorb those costs. So they find other creative ways to use it for different things, so then that they free up general fund dollars for the ability to pay not only today, but for the foreseeable future. We will get that to you and make sure that that's taken care of. I will work very closely with Attorney DePree Bruno regarding referendum language. I would ask, based upon the current schedule for October 11th, which would be inside the 30 days, I would ask for a window to do it at the last workshop in October, if that would be agreeable to the board. We looked at the 27th of September very carefully with the number of presentations we had, as well as what you had described in the last work session, wanting to maximize your time. We looked at those two presentations, they were not date certain for September 27th. So we thought we would move that. I had a conversation with the chair, I was going to announce this later today. We thought we would move those two workshops topics to October 11th, which gives us a very full boat, a very full agenda on the 11th, and give you back the 27th. If that's not the desire, we can bring those items back to the 11th. We probably won't have a full amount of time, but we can certainly schedule your calendars appropriately so you'd know when the workshop is expected to end. That would free you up and free up your afternoon, and that would free up the item for the 11th. I can have that conversation with the chairman. And I suspect that unless you're willing to flex a little bit on the 30 days, then we'll have to move some of the October 11th work session back to the 27th. When it comes to the construction process, I will share with you that I would welcome, and I think RSM is probably the right way to go about. They've explained in numerous times in front of the board how Riverdale got where Riverdale got. I think it would be wise to use your internal auditor at this point with the scope of looking specifically at that project, and then looking at the current policies to see whether that's enough to guarantee this board. Since we've been implementing the process of getting a construction official, then doing Phase 1, and then doing Phase 2. Phase 1 gives us an accurate number of what a facility is going to cost. Since we have used that process and gone to a guaranteed maximum price, you have never gone over budget, and that's why Scott continually reports to you. And we build contingencies into every project, but we've added additional language that that must be construction and district agreement in order to use those contingency funds. The contractor just can't say, I'm going to spend a million more dollars. They have to meet with our team, we have to look at the reasons why, and we have the scope. We put that in just in case we have other contingencies that occur. And with hurricane projects, those percentages have been slightly higher at the request of our insurance agents, our consultant, and the FEMA organization. We'll talk more about that, I assume, when we talk about the P3 tonight. So be happy to do that, and we can use the audit committee this week to bring up a point of the order. I'll be happy to bring that up. I know the chair will also be there, so we can have that discussion with the audit committee and get some direction from RSM how to proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Does that conclude your comments? Ms. Morgan?
Yes, both.
Okay, moving on to Ms. Langford Fleming.
I have none.
Chair Persons?
I have none.
Ms. Jordan?
I have a report from EDAC. I can do it now, or I can do it tonight. Now, I've got to find it. Based on our new policy, we have to give a report after each meeting. So EDAC meeting was held on September 11th, 2023, the first meeting of the month. There were eight committee members out of the 15. They elected a chair and a vice chair. Dr. Blakely was renamed the chair. Ms. Paula Porter was named the vice chair. They went over Robert Rules of Order, Policy 9140, and any changes that just came to be. They voted for the three members to sit on the site selection committee. They also had a presentation by Dr. Malloy regarding the planet and growth and the next phase of proximity. Then they also had asked about having information on any legislative issues that does not embody the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that was a carryover from last year when Ms. Morgan was there. And that is my report on EDAC.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Patrica?
So I'm going to say it now, because you definitely don't want to hear it tonight. You want to go home tonight. Three things. ALVA meeting, Dr. Malloy hit it out of the park, as usual. And also, thank you to Mr. Ramirez for helping with technological issues. As I was texting him through Zoom, he responded right away. And I know that staff in that building helped as well, so thank you for that. The chat reflects significant appreciation by the ALVA residents who were on Zoom as well. So thank you from them. The FSBA West Central meeting, thank you first to Mrs. Langford Fleming for covering ITF so I could go. I mentioned to the superintendent in our one-on-one that we received a presentation about construction. And I think the slide deck might be in my inbox. As soon as I get the slide deck, I'll send it to you. As I mentioned, I think a lot of the details of that presentation reflects staff work. But at the same time, it was good to open our eyes as board members to make sure that our policies are correct. Because it's mostly staff work, I want you to see that slide deck. And then finally, a question for the superintendent, to the chair, if I may, connect with Lee. Is that available to anyone? I know it is available to anyone. We were talking this afternoon about prep for ACC and SAT. Is that for kids who are trying to get concordant scores? Or is that for kids who are trying to get from 75% bright futures to 100% bright futures? Either one. So perhaps we could advertise that, because that's huge savings for families who are trying to get their kids from 75% to 100%. That's thousands of dollars of tutoring out of pocket, which I always tell families is totally worth it, because they're going to save a ton of money on tuition. But if this is a service we're offering to our kids, then we really need to get families.
So the answer to your question is it is both, and yes, we had a request earlier, it was in this meeting, earlier this afternoon, for some form of video to advertise that particular issue. So we will add that to part of the script, so they understand that that's an available resource to all families.
Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
I have none, thank you.
I have none. Dr. Bernier?
Just one item. I've had a couple of board members ask me, did we have a student performance tonight? We do not have a student performance at the school board meeting, but we do have the art walk. The art walk begins at 5:00 PM. That's the annual art walk, where the students will come in and see their particular artwork hanging, the families will be with them. It's a really great opportunity to interact with our constituents and our children. So hopefully, we'll see you in the hallways.
Attorney DePree Bruno?
I don't, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We will, oop, Ms. Juvenelli?
Dr. Bernier, were you going to discuss the P3 now?
I can.
I think that would be beneficial.
Sure, there's been a question from one of the board members regarding the P3, Mr. Chair? With your permission?
Proceed.
Let's begin by just really briefly reminding everybody that Florida Statute 255.065 gives a great description of the definition of a public-private partnership. We sometimes refer to that in our organization as a P3. And it actually goes further in that language to actually encourage school districts and other entities to consider that. The legislature finds that there is a public need for construction or upgrade, when there's a need for construction or upgrade of facilities that are used predominantly for public purposes. And it is in the interest of the public to provide for that construction or the upgrade of such facilities. So there are various ways that we can build and we can construct. Public-private partnerships are one. I know recently, some of you attended a Florida School Boards Association regional meeting, and there was a model of a private-public partnership that was discussed. They range from the one we have on the agenda tonight to ones that are much more complex. In some cases, they go as far as a company in a private-public partnership will secure the land. They will build the building, and they will lease it back over a 25- or 30-year period of time to the school district. During that period of time, that company then absorbs the need for any air conditioning, repair costs, repainting, re-roofing. In a sense, the goal at the end of a 30-year period of time is you would have, basically, a 30-year-old, brand-new building. And that is an example that's currently underway in Polk County. Our private-public partnerships, specifically with Hector Cafaretta, fit the definition of looking for it because there was a need, and timing was a critical factor. The private-public partnership, they have a history in our state of use in the educational sector, primarily among charter schools. Using private partnerships results in high-quality infrastructure. And the most of the new infrastructure is brought into the public sector through private companies who have gained experience delivering other products and other services for other types of consumers. For instance, in Phoenix outside the state, the share of 3,000 square foot, the share of 3,000 square feet was once the mall of Maryville. So they also operate sometimes where in a private-public partnership, you could go in, like some of our other schools, to a Kmart or a formerly used Sears building and hire someone to do those renovations as well. So they're not always used for new construction, probably at the end of the description, or the most intense private-public partnership are the ones where they build and we lease back, all the way to what we used, which was the least intensive, which was to find a vendor willing to build Hector Cafaretta as a K8 as quickly as possible. Charter schools have used these in the past for P3 processes to support construction. Additionally, as I said, Polk County is currently using this process to create a school building that they don't necessarily have the funding to build right now, but they do have the money to lease it back, and at some point, they will own the building. The partnership with Hector Cafaretta is a build. It is a competitively put-out process where we told people what we wanted. We shared where we wanted it on the piece of land that we own. And companies competed to present their very best plans. Those companies then are interviewed, and they present, and they are all present when they present. And following those presentations, a contractor was selected to build the Hector Cafaretta replacement for the building that is no longer able to serve our children. It's like a C-Mark contract. It is a construction manager-at-risk contract. It has a guaranteed maximum price. There is a contingency built in, should we run into contingencies. But we are looking, with our additions, we're looking at about $78 million. Went 78, 79, $80 million round, to look at what we're going to build a K8 for, which is in line with what it costs us to build a middle school. Lamb's was around the same cost. When you look at some of our other K8 designs that we've looked at, they've been excess of $100 million in estimate. This will run that same process. There will be, there's a contractor that you will approve tonight to go into Phase 1, if you so approve it. They will then do all the due diligence work. We will come back with a guaranteed maximum price. They will be responsible. If they do not meet that cost, they can't charge us anymore. And that's the way we've continued to build all of our projects. This was just a unique way to get it out on the street, to use a procurement word, to get it advertised faster and get a result faster, because we know we're paying for the temporary campus for Hector Cafaretta behind the Cape Coral Technical Center. We do not own that property. We are renting those facilities, the actual physical buildings, from a third party. So we want to try to get out of there as quickly as possible. And this particular P3 project gave us the best avenue moving forward. I know the item's been pulled for further discussion, and I'll be available between the end of this, the end of this meeting, all the way to... the end of this, the end of this meeting, all the way to, all the way till we sit back down and we say we're ready to have a school board meeting tonight. Sorry, I lost train of thought, because I caught a board member's eye.
I thought it was unpulled. So, in other words, it's pushed. It's not pulled anymore.
Okay. Anything else? We're good? We're good? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bernier, I appreciate that overview. We will have our action meeting tonight at 6:00, seeing, you know, there's business to come before this board. This meeting is adjourned at 4:28 PM. Have a great day.